All right, Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Okay, welcome everybody in the internet and those on YouTube. Today is Tuesday, June 18th. This is a special meeting of the Board of Valley County Commissioners, basically for budgets for the rest of the day. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Need a motion to approve the agenda for today. I guess the only thing that is there's not any time on this, but I think we're going to shoot for around noon for today because both Commissioner Moplin and I have another engagement this afternoon. Hopefully, we can get a lot done at least till noon today. And then if we have to have another meeting here pretty quick. Gonna make a motion that we accept the meeting, what, June 13th?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Okay, um, we had motion second to approve the agenda in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So we're gonna move down to the lower table, I'm assuming. And Jeremy, you are here, so come on up. You guys want to sit up here or you want to go down there?
I'd find up here.
You're okay up here?
I'd rather be at my computer. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Jeremy. And you're certainly welcome to sit down if you want, if you don't want to stand the whole time.
Oh, don't matter, I'll sit.
Yeah, I gotta find your budget.
This is the last one that came.
So where's, where's all this at? What?
So in your meeting.
Well, this is a comparison, the wrong one. No, I always on the right one.
No, but there's one that's for just 100-14. Very last packet item that came.
The very last one, motor pool. Not that one.
It's titled 100-14. Find it, Neil.
We found it, yeah. Back up here a little bit. There we go.
Gabby sent us the meeting packet on 6/13 at 4:19.
Uh, can you send it to me again? I am. Think I accidentally erased it.
Actually, I sent it yesterday.
Go back and delete it items, probably find it.
Send it to you again, make sure you're online.
Let me know when you're ready.
Actually, it's up on here too, so we don't really even need our stuff, honestly, but.
Jeremy, we've kind of gone through this in the past, but it looks like there's a There it is. A slight increase in your budget from last year, not looking at the A budget. Look at IT, equipment, security.
Yes, the three biggest ones that are going up is software. That's because licensing costs go up. So that's from 160 to about 190, 160 this year.
Yep.
190 for fiscal year 25 is the request.
And then you dropped mailing equipment down 1500. Uh, increase in GIS, is that the contract itself?
Correct, so that's the, that's the contract with Kara. She increased her fees with all of her clients. So she had requested to renegotiate the contract for fiscal year 25, but she didn't.
Can you tell me off top of here what it is a month? Maybe I can figure it out here.
There's 2,000 in there also for our fire webs.
I'll do that 2,000 in there for that.
Hers is 65.
65,000?
Yeah. And that's for what she's doing. We are getting a steal of a deal at the county.
Fifty-four, one, six.
Or a GIS tech, it would be far more than that if we were not, if we weren't doing it this way with a vendor. And did you have anybody apply for your job even? I don't remember.
I didn't, so when we, when we did it, when Kara first left, we, we did, I don't know if the job description was written the best. The ones that we got, nobody really stood out as somebody that could really do what we needed to do. I have not reposted it for fiscal year 25.
Okay.
We certainly can as a contingency. I believe that the, I'm hoping that the position was, it was removed from the, our A budget for fiscal year 24 because we were contracted with Kara. I'm hoping that the position itself wasn't eliminated so that if we wanted to temporarily add it back in and post for that job to try and get somebody, you know, maybe rewrite the, the job posting and, and look for a full-time employee, we can certainly, we can certainly try. We can certainly do that.
Is this a networking guy?
No, it's G I.
G I S, to replace Kara, yeah.
Okay.
So do you think if you were to post it, could you get somebody all in at 65? I mean, that's benefits and salary included. You'd have to post it at 50?
I don't, I'd have to look and see what it's.
What would be the reasoning?
Gabby, will you check salaries and make sure he didn't lose the position? So that he would have that opportunity in the future? We'll confirm that.
What, what's the reasoning for posting that? I mean, if we already have the individual, even though she's not local.
She, she is local, she used to work for us, Kara did. And then she left and contracted back with us because it was kind of a short notice kind of a thing. But she only contracts for 40 hours a month to do the, our maintenance and things like that. So the idea is if we had somebody full-time that, you know, they'd be dedicated, because she has other clients, she does training, so she's gone a lot. Things like that, so.
Contracting to her, so.
Yeah, so if we had somebody, a full-time employee that filled that position that had the same level of experience to take over the, the, uh, those duties that, you know, they'd be dedicated to the county, they could
Do other.
Work on other projects for the people more easily and efficiently, yeah, things like that.
I follow you.
Jeremy, we're done with Computer Arts after this year? You, you got a budget at zero is why I asked.
Um, it should be 20,000, actually. So there's, there's two reasons for that. Reason number one is again, because of the timing with the transition to Eagle Recording. The
Thank you again.
The need from the clerk's office to have that data available for a little bit of time, just in case there's any kind of issues. Unfortunately, what we've learned from Computer Arts is they won't. They won't let us pay for like, you know, four months. Like say, we only want to pay for it through, from the beginning of fiscal year 25 to January. They, they won't do that, we've asked in the past, they make us pay for the full year. In addition, there is one application of Computer Arts that we still have. It's in the CIP, it's a civil software in the sheriff's office. Replacing that is currently in the CIP process. I'm, I'm not sure if we've, what the decisions are in those projects or not yet, but.
But on this screen, Gabby's got a highlight, you've got that for the ask is zero.
Yeah, I will put it back to 20.
So we need to add 20,000 back in?
Yeah, I was gonna leave the 20,000 that was in there.
That's gonna put the increase for the whole department to 70,000 bucks.
Jeremy, on the computer software, I mean, you're just relicensing. We're not looking at any new computer software?
This isn't really for new, no, that's for all the stuff that we pay for currently.
So are you putting through the CIP anything for Tyler for the building department? Is that where you're looking at that? Or are you not trying to even budget that this year?
That's not included, in fact, the, actually, the, uh, again, because I don't know how this, I don't, this wouldn't even include the civil software, because still the CIP, until it gets approved, I don't know if I should add that into my budget yet or not.
You should add it into your budget. Everything should be in your budget. And if it doesn't get approved, we'll take it back out.
Do you know how much money we're talking about for that?
Um.
In the CIP?
So I just got the quote from, um, I do an RFQ because of the cost. And because we're such a small community, no one's gonna see it in our paper. So I, I did some research, reached out to various software companies to say, hey, we have this RFQ, if you want to respond to it. Nobody did, Tyler was the only one that did. And they had demoed their civil software last year with the sheriff's department. And they liked it, so I got a quote from them last week, finally. Because the, the deadline for the RFQ was, that I wanted it for everybody else, it was like last week or something. So if it didn't come out of pilot, there's some other funding mechanism for the implementation. The implementation would be 100,000. And then it, the, because it's cloud-based, the ongoing maintenance year over year would be 60,000.
That's for the civil software at the sheriff's office? And what does that accomplish for the county? What does that, how does that improve our service transparency, resiliency and?
So it gets us out of Computer Arts completely, because that's the last module we have left. In addition, it has a lot more functionality that, than Computer Arts does. So it'll make it much easier for the deputies, even in the field, to serve people with papers, to engage with the public on any, any, any of the various civil processes that they do.
Ask the sheriff about that, I.
And you said it was about 100,000 to start and then 60,000 year maintenance?
Yes, 100,000 would include the, so if we did this in fiscal year 25, 100,000 would include the, um, the implementation and that year's maintenance. From fiscal year 26 and on, the ongoing maintenance would be 60,000 a year.
I mean, is there, if we can't afford it, I'm just gonna ask, can we stay with Computer Arts and assuming that's the 20 grand for that?
Yes.
And 20 grand will still, that program will still work okay for the sheriff if we can't afford this?
I, I mean, it'll be the same as what they're doing now, so yeah, I guess so, yeah. But the only other thing to consider is that Harris Computing bought Computer Arts. And that software is such a mess, they're not trying to salvage it in any way. So eventually, they're, it's gonna go away in the next three to five, six years.
So this is archaic.
Yes, it's, it's, it's been archaic for me.
And that's a lot of.
So they're gonna push us, they're gonna force us to push to another software anyways at some point in the next five to six years. So it's kind of like, do we do it now or do we wait?
What's the budget on the, for the CIP for the building program? How much is that?
I, because of the way the timing worked out, I didn't actually submit a CIP for that. Because it wasn't until after the process started that, um, we started talking about looking at other alternatives. And I haven't gotten a quote yet from, from them for the enterprise version, so I don't know.
So if we waited one more year, let it stay Computer Arts, it's coming here. See what next year's budget brings us, because that's, that's a big chunk.
It'll still be a big chunk next year, so.
It will be too, but I mean, it might, because we got a lot coming out of this year, I know.
Yeah.
Well, and the, the building department has been asking for something that works for years. We, we've got to find a solution for the building department too. They've been put on the back burner for quite some time. Um, so I think.
I tend to certainly not to put them on the back burner, but.
I think you need to move forward and find out what that cost is going to be so we can actually figure out those holes we need to plug. And we can't do it all in one year, we've got to do it multiple years. So we need to figure out the highest priority. So if you could reach out and figure out what that module is that we demoed? And, you know, at least, did that guy ever respond to you on what their, the current program upgrades are gonna be this year?
No, not yet.
Um, at least find out what the new one would be, so we know approximately what we're looking for. I think it's probably too expensive for this year, but we need to prioritize. We need to figure out what we're, what we've got.
I agree.
Yeah.
Hey? Not all you've got?
The other big increase was, um, contract security went up a little bit. But again, that's where I pay for all of our like antivirus and stuff out of. And again, licensing costs just up a little bit over the year. And then the capital IT equipment, I'd only put in 30,000 for fiscal year 24 because I didn't, hadn't planned on any projects. And that was just for any emergencies, if I needed to buy a server or something.
Is that on the next page?
And I increased that to 80 because of the increased need for laptops, people wanting, um, newer or second monitors, things of that nature. So that's why that went from 30 to 80 was to purchase some of that, some of that stuff.
So didn't we just replace all the, the desktops?
We did.
Did that include the monitors?
Uh, we replaced some, but not all, but this is more for, for a long time, I don't know if I can get into past history, but for a long time, people didn't have dual monitor setups. And so it's not necessarily new monitors, it's people that want that second monitor. And I don't know if you remember, I did that a few months ago, I did that one time. Like, hey, if your individual budget, if you could find a place to pay for it, you let me know and we'll get the monitors this year. But so for everybody that didn't do that, like a big one is the assessor's office.
What do those monitors usually run?
300 bucks and 250 and 300 bucks apiece.
Is there, is there any way we could cut that down a little bit?
At what down?
50,000 increase in IT, is there anything else besides?
Yeah, so the other thing would be increased requests for laptops, um, all of the, you know, a lot of the assessors work from home and a lot of the laptops they're using are not even current ones that we bought. A lot of them are like the older ones that we had from several years ago. So that's like 10 or 11 laptops there. So it's not just monitors, it's also increased requests for people who want to use laptops instead of a desktop.
And I know we talked here a few weeks back about trying to get an off-site server room in case this facility catches fire. I think that's something that we need to start thinking about, not for this year's or 25 budget, but for down the road. And I'm assuming this would be the line we would take some of those.
Mm-hmm.
Those out of, but I really.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it would depend on how that was set up. If it was just a, a place to restore backups to so we can get up and running, that's different than if we wanted to physically replicate what we have here somewhere else so that the failure would be instantaneous, that'd be very, very expensive.
You have kind of a rough guess, couple hundred grand?
Yeah, e- easy, if we wanted to replicate our entire server room somewhere else, yeah, easily.
Easily got backup now, don't we?
Yeah.
We don't need to repeat what we've already got, but the concern would be, okay, if that burns down, how are we gonna get everybody fired back up with all their servers burned up? That would be the issue, I think. So it's something I, I realize I'm not gonna be here down the road. Something you guys need to think about in the future is, is getting the backup on that server stuff.
Yeah.
That's just asking for trouble, but.
A lot of that, can we go to the cloud instead of physically backing up somewhere else?
So that's, that's, we can, and that's been talked about, that, that also gets very expensive. That's one of the reasons why the civil software, the ongoing maintenance is, is 60,000 a year, is because that server is hosted in AWS GovCloud. And that's, those are the kind of costs you're looking at when you start putting servers in the cloud as opposed to having them on locally. It does increase costs by a significant amount.
So if, let me get this right, because I'm not an IT guy. If we have our own server, that 60,000 would go down?
It would, when, when they, when they first did their quote last year, um, they had another, they, they gave me two quotes, the similar one to this one and then another one where instead of the server being hosted on AWS GovCloud, we would host it here locally, um, in our infrastructure, like we do a lot of the other stuff. And I think the yearly maintenance in, I think the, it kind of swapped the quote, the implementation costs, the upfront costs was a little bit more. But the ongoing maintenance was only like, I think it was probably half, like 30,000. But with that 60,000, what you get is, not only is it hosted, the server is hosted in the cloud, so if anything ever happened here, it would still be accessible. But they also do all of the maintenance and the security and all that other stuff that we would have to do ourselves. They take care of all of that for us. So that's why that yearly cost is so much more to have that hosted in the, in the, in the cloud.
Thank you for explaining that.
Just, this is what, it's one of those things.
You have to be carryover.
Love my pay grade.
Do you have any carryover from last year that can take care of any of this?
I actually don't know because I'm, I didn't think that county budgets worked that way.
Well, you could kind of see his activity right up here now.
Right, but I wasn't, I guess it was unclear if I didn't spend everything in a line item. I, I always assumed it just kind of went back into the pool and it didn't like a, a true year over year kind of. Unless I'm mistaken on how.
It does, it does go into the pool, but we can kind of clearly show, or we can project that if you didn't expand all of your, your budget for fiscal year 2024, potentially some of that can be used for, um, as remaining cash to fund your 2025 budget, right?
Got it.
So I want to make sure that, that we're still, we're gonna be at 70,000 increase over last year's budget. Is that right, Gabby? Do we have the 20 back into that?
Yeah, 20 back into CAI.
The CIA, yeah, CAI is back in, that's one.
30 in the computer software and 50, about 50.
The department went up to 70,000.
So Doug, his question was on the CIP, he doesn't have any of the CIP in his budget. So I think last year, we made a determination that everybody needed to put the CIP request in their budget. We'll take them out if they don't get through.
And I, and I must have missed that, I apologize.
So I guess, I apologize, um, just to get myself on track of what the discussion is. The CIP that you submitted.
But I only submitted one.
Has not been budgeted for in your budget right now?
It is not in my budget, because I, I apologize, I, I missed that from.
Yeah, we do need to add that into the budget if that's clarif- the clarifying question that's being asked, yes.
Oh, we need to add in his CIP request too. I haven't been on the CIP the last time or two. Did the, you guys have a presentation or where are we at with this?
Uh, I can't remember when we are gonna be making a presentation to the commissioners. It's either on the 20, it might be next week, Commissioner Moplin.
Sounds good, thank you. Yeah, anytime you do, let's just continue, or let's put them in our budgets because build is pretty much done. So we're gonna have to figure out where in our budgets we can pay for these EIP.
Um, Gabby, could you go to the next slide? I just want a quick question for Jeremy. The other way, there you go. You go, there you go, on your IT equipment, you've only spent roughly 20 grand. Is there some more expenses come out of that IT line this year?
Uh, which, for the capital IT equipment?
Yep.
Nothing planned, again, that was in there just for, um, for fiscal year 23, that amount was in there just for emergencies.
So can we use some of that for the monitors in the?
If nothing else comes up between now and, in October, then yes.
Because I think we're gonna have to tighten up a little bit on stuff if we're gonna get any kind of.
I don't know what, unfortunately, I don't know what's gonna happen between now and October, so.
So that leaves 100 and roughly 10,000 or 12,000 in there?
No.
If he's.
The, the budget that we're working on right now is the first one, the parent budget, correct?
Correct.
That's the way I'm reading these.
That's the existing budget.
We have 30,000 existing, he spent almost 20.
He spent 20,000.
So the year before is when we.
So 10,000 left, I don't know what will happen between now and October.
I was looking at the FY '23 is the budget number. That's my mistake.
Now that's good clarity, so we know what we're looking at. So the budget he's working toward right now is comparison one. I don't know what the comparison, or comparison one, comparison two, I guess we might use.
Okay, any more questions for Jeremy on IT?
Um, there's data processing down below, is that you also? So it's page three?
It's all the same departments.
Yeah, it was, I think it was called data, it was called data processing back whenever these budgets were created, long before I was here.
Okay.
Stop talking about your budget expenses and stuff.
Got it. Good to know.
Okay.
So I will, I will add that civil, now that I have a solid number, I'll add that in and get with Clerk Miller and have that added in and then.
Perfect.
Again, if it doesn't get approved, then we can just take it back out, I guess.
Okay.
And we really should add in the building.
I'll add that in too as soon as I get a solid quote on that.
Yeah, we're obviously not gonna be able to do everything, but that way they're in our budget. We need to figure out how many years out we need to plan for some of this stuff, so.
Okay, I'll do it. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Gabby, do you want me to give you control?
Hey, Captain, where'd you go? Oh, there is, come on up. So we're gonna go to sheriff, next budget? That is.
So it's 100-04, commissioners.
So, welcome, Dave, um, Gabby's got it up there, we're just kind of looking, really to me, there's the comparison increase from last year.
Why, why is such a high number for salaries, Dave? For deputies adding?
That's a four.
385,000. So I can explain that, so I was gonna ask some clarifying questions with the sheriff. I didn't get a chance to ask. So they, but they have all their positions, they have five openings, but then they hired a couple of part-time people. So I didn't take away any of their existing five. I just added in those part-time people because I wasn't sure. So this was certainly probably way too high.
We'll take salaries later then.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and that was a question that needs to kind of get flushed out and how, how is hiring those part-time people affecting the full-time status? Because if you don't reduce some, it's going to be a huge increase.
Yeah, he still only has so many FTE. If he hires part-time, that's gotta reduce those FTE.
Yeah, that's the conversation.
Gabby, this 385 is a 4%? Is that, where you got that number from?
Where are you asking, sorry?
On the increase, is that with just a general across the board 4% increase in salary?
It's the increase that Mike, Mike, that we were gonna talk about.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, let's go on down, look at B budget, um.
Travel for admin went up 6,000. And travel for civil went up 5. Is that, are those new categories? And you guys haven't used hardly anything in the last couple of years on those.
Recategorize to title it admin, it hadn't been titled admin before. The sheriff had asked us to title this admin to separate the deputies versus the admin. Train is something that we're clear. And I can't remember if we reduced anywhere or if we just.
The third line, the travel went down by 4,000. So that's incorporated into the 11 up above.
Distribution of it a little bit, I, yeah, use four and the top of six. The civil admin there, never been a line before for the civil house.
So what, what is civil training?
So those are your D and B clerks. They're not D and B, driver's license clerks, your evidence.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And we reduce that, that's a lot to go from zero to five in one year. We have a lot of new people. We have a lot of new people. What's?
Yeah, we have. In fact, we're going to have another new one. But, um, yeah, that's, that's what trainings cost us nowadays to send people to training. Um, those girls, um, over there in civil have to go through, uh, mandatory courses through DMV or, or, uh, civil processes and we, we just don't have a, a, uh, a way to get them around that other than send them to their, so, so they're, uh, up to date on everything.
So the training is, takes care of meals, travel, everything?
Yes.
So on the admin, Dave, I mean, if that, this, this is just a large increase in training for the sheriff's part.
It, it, I cannot, we're sending a lieutenant to a IA class and just the, per, just the, um, registration fee is nine hundred dollars. So he would be coming out of that admin class. Um, the sheriff would be coming out of that, uh, admin line. I would be coming out of that admin line. Um, we, we pull everybody but besides a deputy or sergeant on down would come out of the other training budget, but it's, uh, it's increased across the board on per diem, on housing, on travel, on, um, you know, we do a lot of in-house training here. Everybody's certified for our high liability stuff and we do the in-house training here, but we do have to send people away to, uh, go to an IA course or something like that that costs us money.
So travel, registration, meals, basically that is included up there in those. It is. We, Commissioner Thompson, we reduced, that's correct. We, we eliminated that, that travel registration meal line and added that into, uh, the, excuse me, and we eliminated that GL at account number and just added that into the. Add to the other two, right?
If, um, going on down, I think I'm up with you here. Your, uh, budget for two vehicles?
We're in the process of trying to find a couple of vehicles right now. At the most, it'll be two, but it's probably going to be one this year.
Okay.
And, uh, the cost of, uh, I think the cost of the bill should be, that's applied. Yeah. So that, that was for two vehicles. So it'll probably be more, more likely, uh, down to twenty thousand this year for the build of a vehicle.
And that's for you guys, just to put all of your stuff on the vehicle because Jeff actually buys them in his line item. You just outfit them, correct?
Yes.
He.
We actually budgeted for three build outs.
Three vehicles?
At, well, he.
Sixty, sixty thousand.
Oh, okay. I thought it said forty. I was looking at the wrong line.
It's an increase.
Okay.
Got it.
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're looking at one, possibly two, but more, more than likely just one vehicle if we can find it.
For next fiscal year?
We'd like to buy it this fiscal and have it built out by November, December and get it on the road. So.
So that means reduced to twenty then? Or you want to go back to forty in case you find two?
Yeah, we'd like to stay, we'd like to stay there for right now, but, um.
What's Jeff budgeted for? He budgeted for one or two?
It's not, it's not in the budget. We're going to do the, we're going to use the money out of.
Capital Equipment Fund?
Yeah.
Come on, Jeff.
Jeff buys the vehicle.
One, it's three, it's four, it's two, it's.
They're, they're just outfitting.
It depends. So we, we're trying to utilize that capital equipment fund to at least purchase one of the vehicles.
Is that the cascade fund?
That's correct.
Okay.
This year.
Twenty-four.
So prior to October?
Twenty-five, we're looking at. We're looking at two to three for twenty-five. Two to three. Great.
So that, this is outfitting three for next year. So that's basically after October, this will allow you to buy three and outfit them.
We want it, we're going to, we're not going to get the new one for this year until October and we're going to use the money for next year to outfit that one that we're getting prior to in, in the December time, November, December timeframe. So really, I guess we're looking at getting three to next year. We should have four outfitted up there. Outfit.
So Jeff, when you surplus these vehicles, where does that money go that comes in from that value? Does that go back into motor pool? Or do you have to split it off and put some of it back in this?
Depends which vehicle it is. If it's a road department vehicle, sorry to.
Sheriff vehicle.
If it's a sheriff vehicle, if they're surplusing any like motor pool or sheriff vehicle, then that money that's received is receded into the general fund. Typically though, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is that the sheriff vehicles aren't surplus. Those sheriff vehicles are repurposed or the assessor's office for, so the sheriff vehicles usually aren't surplus until they're three hundred thousand, right, Jeff? I mean, until the mileage, until they're falling apart. The county has done a remarkable job of repurposing the sheriff patrol vehicles.
I agree.
Over the years.
Yes.
Here on out with these SUVs, we haven't had it go circulate far enough. We're likely, the road department is not going to get any of those. So we'll repurpose where we can, assessor, uh, whatever. There's got to be a certain number of those patrol vehicles.
Right.
We'd be in doubt or make sure we push that.
Yeah, yeah.
Dave, in the past, we've gotten from you guys a breakdown of the vehicles you currently have in the mileage. Can we get an updated list of that?
Yes.
If everybody's good on that one, let's go on down to.
I don't know that we resolved that out really quick because Dave just said if he's, if he's going to buy three more, he's got outfit one also. So he needs eighty in that line item, not sixty. Is that what I heard you say?
Yes.
Isn't eleven thousand outfit them? Eleven, twelve thousand?
No.
Is there more now?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Twenty thousand now?
It's, yeah.
They do that over in Salt Lake? Is that where they do that?
We're not doing that. Uh, yes, in Salt Lake, yeah.
So we need to try and, we need to increase that to eighty, but I like that list. How many actually are going to have to buy?
I don't know what's in there. Uh, did we, is that out for this year? Have we used that line? I think we have.
You have.
You have.
You've got.
Yep.
Uh, if we buy the vehicle this year out of capital, if we outfit it out of there?
Yeah, good question.
And you could outfit it.
Absolutely.
Exactly. If we're buying three vehicles, we should be allowed to fit them out of that one too.
That's true. Yeah, I'll leave it at sixty. I had to have the capital. Remember to take it out of there.
Okay, so we're going to bump that one from forty to what, or sixty to eighty thousand? We're going to leave it at sixty in capital and outfit it with this year's funds. Okay, let's move on down, um.
Let's just make sure, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Make sure that we are all on the same page. So the request for next year is for three sheriff patrol vehicles. Is that correct, Captain?
Yes.
Okay. So now what we have in fact done is we have budgeted for outfitting three of those. Question is, is potentially could we use the capital equipment fund to potentially purchase one and, uh, outfit it?
That'd be the sheriff's call.
Be a sheriff's decision on that, but it's something that we could have approached the sheriff to see if that's.
Sure.
It would be allowed. So it's possible, Commissioners, that we can reduce the sixty down to forty if the, uh, if the sheriff.
So you want to purchase one and outfit one this year out of that fund and then outfit one next year out of that fund also?
That's, that would be an option, yeah.
Okay. I, yeah, that's, that's a sheriff.
Something we need to discuss with the sheriff.
There needs to be a plan of what, every year for the capital.
Yes, agreed.
Yeah, it should be kind of annual.
So we don't overexpend.
Well, and we had talked about last year, every year we're going to buy two vehicles for you guys and now I'm hearing three.
Here, here's the, here's the problem is I don't control, and Jeff can speak to this a little bit better too. I don't control when Dodge opens up their orders bank. And they, this year they opened it up in April. Um, they shut it down two weeks later. And after that, we're, we don't get cars.
But we already approved you guys to go find a couple.
Not, not for this year. Remember la- last year we, on the CIP, we, we passed on cars. We said we were good. Now, if I don't order those cars and they're supposed to roll in in October, we're not getting a car in October. We're waiting till hopefully they open it up in April next year. And so now we're in, we're in October of twenty-five of getting, of getting the vehicle. So that, I have no control over that. So that's what we're trying to avoid.
That was the conversation we've had since then. We actually had a meeting and said, you guys are pre-approved to do two cars a year. So whenever they open it up, we can order two cars. And now I'm hearing three.
No, no, no. Three, let me get you that, let me get you the spreadsheet.
That'd be great, okay. That's what we need is, we need to set, you know, we're doing so many cars a year and when the window opens up, you know you're approved for that much in a budget. And so we need to quit doing the one, the two, the three. We just need, we're going to replace a couple of cars a year.
Yeah, we're just trying to be fiscally responsible because we really didn't need two cars this year.
Okay.
And, uh, I, uh, Lieutenant just said his bid to get one outfitted is twenty-seven-ten, twenty thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
Wow.
Outfit a car.
How many miles do you put on a vehicle a year?
The, uh, you, I'm going to have to average that out. I think the last time I did the math on that, it averaged out to about twenty-three thousand a year, maybe more. I, I will have to do that average again.
And you guys can make those last to about a hundred.
National, the, the national, I guess, which one, the best practice is, is, uh, get rid of them at one-twenty.
One-twenty. So you can get five years out of a patrol vehicle?
In theory, yes.
In theory. Okay. That's good to know.
Jeremy, our internet's down again. I, I've had to sign on three times this morning. Do you know if we have issues?
Well, let's move on to the next page, the weapons. Um, that was a pretty big jump. Is that for new staff?
What did we, where are we with that?
Went from two to fifteen thousand.
Uh, didn't we pull that, or, uh, Doug, didn't we, didn't we pull that request? We're not.
That's why we're here today is.
Yeah, that was for the red dot system and I believe we just, we pulled that and, um, yeah, we're not. Yes.
Two thousand, okay. And then on the body armor, I thought there was a grant program you guys used to get.
There is, Commissioner, we.
Is it, it's not a full funding, it's a match grant?
Yes, half.
Fifty percent. So we budgeted ten thousand, we will budget a revenue of five thousand. Uh, so we will.
Okay.
Getting fifty percent back from the grant.
Awesome. Tasers. They have a lifetime on the taser, then you have to trade them in, right?
Well, Axum has a, has the whole world cornered on the taser industry. Um, we're kind of at their beck and call. Right, we are at their beck and call. So the ones that we have now are not being supported anymore. They're being transitioned out. They're no good. They won't support them. So we are coming up on our five-year contract and the new models, Taser seven and Taser ten, um, that got raised up for them to, like, doesn't have the last years, but I, it's at the five, it's at twelve four hundred now? Is that what you have, Doug, on there? Twelve, yeah, twelve five to round it off per year and it, it went from what, six?
Yes.
Hey, tell me what we did last time because when we were using outdated tasers, I thought we leased them or something where they would replace them. You're smiling at me. I mean, this is three or four years ago. We were supposed to get automatically renewed every time these tasers came.
Yeah, and that, this is, this is, this contract's run its course.
Okay.
And it's the same thing with this one, but they.
That long?
Yeah. So I don't, you know, they've now got rid of the tw- taser twenty-six. They're going to these other tasers. It's a two-dark system versus a one-dark. Uh, it's all the, it's all the new stuff that they claim is, um, better than the one dark. So we're moving, we're moving on past that. And of course, the price went up on that. They don't support.
New five-year contract?
What's that?
This is a new five-year contract?
Yes.
So then this is just a one-time cost upgrade or what is the annual?
It'll be, it'll be that annually, the twelve eight or whatever annually. Twelve-four.
That's so expensive.
Hey, Dave, the next question I have is the next line, DMT, what does that stand for?
As a native marksman training.
Oh, so that's shooting stuff?
Yes.
Okay. And life lock?
Life locks are the, the, uh, devices they use on the side of the road for DUIs.
Oh, okay. So can that be reimbursed through court, Doug?
No.
And the same.
Could be.
The interlock device.
Interlock, that's what I think, okay.
The, the interlock device can be, the life lock, uh, unfortunately.
Different deal.
Yep.
Okay. That's where I got.
And we ran into the same thing with those is they don't support the ones we have anymore.
Okay, let's move on down.
Well, Mr. Chairman, what, explain life lock to me. I.
Bias that if a person's, uh, pulled over and they're suspected of drunk driving, they are asked to loan this device and it'll give the blood alcohol content.
And we haven't, we've had that for a long time, haven't we?
They, they're just like the taser. They're a piece of equipment that they don't support anymore. They don't update anymore. They won't fix them anymore. So.
So it's a new item to be able to, I got it.
Yeah. I, I think we just bought four or five of them anyways off of last year's budget. So this is kind of finishing off and the new ones pushed in.
Okay. Hey, let's go down, talk about code red. Um, I thought that was an annual cost for code red.
It is, but we're, we're putting, we're moving that into the dispatch, uh, expense.
Oh, okay.
Percent.
Okay.
Um, to move that expense into.
Code red goes to dispatch budget.
Correct.
So the education other, that's other than the training? That's sixteen thousand, use ten this year.
That's for all patrol deputies, uh, Commissioners? So then it didn't change.
Contracts on the policing policy is done way up. Who are we contracting with?
What's that?
Who's the contracting on the policing policy?
Lexi Poll. So this is what we have right now for a policy. Um, Lexi Poll is going to give us the opportunity to integrate all of our unique SOPs and policies that we have to our agency. It's a web-based, uh, platform for the, uh, policy. It will, every day the deputies have a five-minute training they have to take on new case law, on new, uh, on new policies. We will have input on, on if they want to cha- if they're changing a policy and they want to, they go, they want to go from the word should to shall. That'll get sent to us. It'll be highlighted what the change is and we either accept that change or we leave it as should instead of shall. And that's just an example of, but we have complete control over what our policy says. They, they suggest that we make it a shall and not a should. But we will have the option to turn that, um, down. They, they maintain it. They keep it updated. They will transition, they'll have a transition team bring all of our policies and integrate them into Lexi Poll. And, uh, another example of case law, when case law comes through, our PA's office has, does not have the time to vet the case law and write new policy on how we're going to handle this new case law, what the procedures are going to be in the field. They do that for us. They have people that monitor Idaho and every state in the union that, that will, uh, when case law comes in on that state, they will, uh, write that policy and, and, uh, insert it into, into your policy.
So is this a national organization in?
Yeah, they're, they handle many departments on policies.
Is this one more important or the CAI upgrade this year?
Excuse me?
If you had to choose one, is the computer arts upgrade more important this year or this one?
Well, the computer arts is more, it, it's an IT thing and I, I don't know where, where they stand on, you know, I, as far as I know, computer arts not going to be supported anymore. I don't, yeah, so I.
It's still come to taxpayer dollars, so we got to prioritize importance of.
Yeah. Um, the, we need a policy.
Keep, keep them in, you know, the deputies, you know, up to speed on, on law.
We don't, uh, you know, this is what, this is what we're working off of now and it's put us in a bind a couple of times already. Because there, this has very little stuff in.
So David, if we don't do this, what happens? Do you just go off that old policy?
Off of this and, and keep writing, um, you know, policy, um, our own policy that, you know, we have a, we have this and then we also have a section in our, um, on our computer the deputies go to to see, you know, a policy on, you know, how to load a rifle out or whatever and. on our computer the deputies go to to see, you know, a policy on how to load a rifle out or whatever. And I mean, it's time-consuming to write all those policies. I can't, we can't cover everything.
Commissioners, if I could share that the sheriff's office does have the support of the prosecutor attorney's office to move to Lexi Poll. It is being highly recommended by the prosecutor attorney's office to move to this new policing policy.
They've been involved in, they've been involved in this, I think we've had two or three conversations with PA's office on moving to Lexi Poll. They've been involved in the whole process.
So Doug, I'm kind of assuming here, let me know if I'm wrong, but if we move to Lexi Poll, that probably reduces our liability for, for outside.
In theory, it should, yes.
This is kinda like, you gotta do all these steps to get this grant.
But I can tell you, there's not gonna be a reduction in our I-CRAN payment or anything. We can, the county can just be assured that by going to this new policing policy, yes, we are reducing our liability by having a more thorough policing policy.
You know, Dave, is this an annual cost or is it gonna go down after we get it?
Uh, the annual is, no, well, yes, it'll go down, but let me see what the annual pull-up that for you. I wanna say it was, I'm mistaken. The jail, this, is this, Doug, is this the jail included in this too?
Yeah, no, the jail is, you're right, it's separate.
So, um, looks like it'll be eighty-one hundred, uh, a year after that.
So the initial cost.
Initial is.
Thirty-one-five.
Okay. They gave us a couple different options in here. I mean, we can, we can go to them without the, um, what they call the implementation part of it. And we kinda pick what tiers we wanna go through on the implement, implementation part of it. But, um, that would be the cost yearly after that for the maintenance. And this is all, you know, obviously web-based, so if one of our deputies is in court, they need to prove the train they go through, they just simply go into their training folder, print out their training profile, and it's all there.
It's like a good backup for, for our organization.
Hey, let's move on down, law enforcement. The four thousand you took to zero, can you explain that one? Forty-four hundred went to zero.
Law enforcement traffic.
The one that's highlighted there?
Yeah.
I think we just budgeted inaccurately last year, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
We didn't spend anything last year, it looks like.
Nor the year before, yeah.
Yeah.
And so we're taking that one to zero.
Right.
Now, where is the US Forest Service? Oh, that's.
It's down further.
No, it's up three to seventy-seven hundred. Um, I know we just got more funds from them and other, in grand, you, you took that into consideration when you, when you figured that seventy-seven hundred?
I believe that needs to be corrected to ten thousand.
I think so too, because that's gonna give you more hours.
Yeah.
To be out in the forest service.
Yeah.
We actually got an extra ten, so they've got twenty to spend this year.
Oh, okay.
Needs more than that, but that's okay. So let's take, Gabby, let's take that's ten, ten grand.
I also noticed you guys haven't used any of it this year so far. We need to go in and, Kevin needs to go in and get some funding back or in there correctly.
Well, Travis, you did go to twenty, didn't you?
Okay, and then let's go down, I guess the next one would be the very bottom one, Gabby, capital communications. Is this for the radio program that we're trying to get going, or is that just for other stuff?
That's just for other stuff, handheld radios, car radios, I mean, all that stuff has a lifespan on it.
Yeah.
So.
That's to replace the ones we're on now.
Yeah.
But the goal is to go countywide and everybody's on the same.
Yeah, that's, that's in the talks still, yeah.
I think that's a few years out. Hopefully, we can find some grants for that.
Yes.
Can you kind of?
That's, you know, that I believe is, unless it's under dispatch's, uh, budget, that would be for the maintenance of the towers and, and so there may be some tower upgrade stuff or we need to upgrade any towers. I don't know what, where we're sitting with the tower stuff and repeaters.
Where is dispatch? After jail? Hey, where do you wanna go next? You wanna go jail?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go to, which is, what is that, one hundred twenty?
On the same sheet you just.
And it looks like we dropped office supplies a little bit. Everything stays zero until we get down to electricity, which, yeah, I can see that. Um, there's propane.
New contract.
Where do?
For heating?
Heating, where is that?
It's up above forty thousand.
Oh, there we go. Thanks, Doug. So we're leaving that the same. I think propane's kinda gone down. And we spent twenty-seven-seven. Nope, wrong line, never mind.
That's what we.
My eyes are like freaking out already.
Yeah, fuel for heating.
We're not, we're okay on that one, aren't we? Might have a little extra in there for jail heating, but. Um.
Food's gone.
The, the food contract go up? Do anybody know on the jail?
Yes, we've increased it.
Where's that?
I have it highlighted up there.
Oh, you did?
It went up seventeen thousand.
Your way, yeah, okay.
It's probably easier to use this one.
I keep looking at this, my eyes just go all the way, too small. If anything else stays the same, we go down and we raise dues memberships, but I understand that, that's just more staff. Um, I think the body armor there again, that's partially funded. And tasers.
And tasers.
So the policing policy, that's the same cost for jail as it is for?
It's the same one that we're talking about.
Yeah, the, the, believe it or not, the jails actually are less liability.
Yeah.
I even, it's not the road deputies. So the jail, that'll be tailored to Idaho jail standards. Um, they, they have a, um, right now they have a policy, but it's not maintained. There's no training involved in it. There's no updates on law, case law coming out for the jails. This is gonna do the same thing to patrol.
So the same thing, it'll, it'll initially cost, but ongoing costs will drop down, just like you said before.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if he gave me that, this package or not, what the cost, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be similar. Policy is eighty-one. For fiscal, it would be eighty-one for fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five.
Oh. Okay, and then communications, we took to zero. I guess we pretty well got everything in the jail pod up to date, and so we're shiny there. That's inexpensive, be great. Okay, everybody good with that one?
Yeah, it's going up a little bit. That's normal.
So then where do you wanna go next?
Dispatch.
Okay, let's look at that one, interpretive services, yeah. We're having that same issue with the help district. Seventy-two languages that they help this right now.
Interpreter.
Highlights stayed the same. I thought highlights was going up. Oh, okay. That's good news. Now, we bumped uniforms a little bit. But we dropped miscellaneous, we bumped pre-employment, is that investigations?
Yes.
Okay. Training's the same. Education other, you took that one up eighteen hundred. Is that just for jail staff?
That's for dispatch.
That's for dispatch.
I mean, I'm getting told to do this job for dispatch, okay? Everything else the same, we dropped, I know one communications grant. Um, I thought that's where we, is that the money where we used to pay for repeaters, or is that the Packer John one?
So the.
It's not where we pay for repeaters?
No, the repeater cost is just our lease, um, our lease payments. Are you?
Packer John's down the bottom.
I thought we were saving like five grand a year.
We are. That's a, a trust. We have that money in, in a trust.
It's not a, out of this budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's budgeted for in the sheriff's office budget because they take eighteen hundred dollars a year that they're putting into the trust. We're trying to build up that trust for repeater replacements.
Okay, so you dropped Sentry Link. Um, what is that, just phone?
That's our payment to, to Sentry Link for nine-one-one calls. It's gone down to, from thirty-five thousand to twenty-five thousand.
So then the next one, our code, this is where we put Code Red now, we're funding it.
Correct.
Out of this budget.
Correct.
After John stays the same, you dropped Communications ten-five. Which I think is appropriate since we're all up to date in there. Any more courses on that one?
Really good.
Where are we going next? Yeah, that's it.
Take it, Captain?
Yeah, looks.
Thank you.
Where do we end up?
We'll talk salaries at some point, because overtime pay was in there too, but.
Oh, for the sheriff's office?
Yeah, probably.
Yep.
Under there.
Okay, so the next one is gonna be road and bridge. Dan and Jeff calling up?
Oh, good, we're just getting warmed up. What do we got?
Who's that? Who's that?
Thirty-one.
One oh two.
Got it. Welcome, guys. Good to see you. I hope you're all still getting along and like each other and.
World of budgeting.
So far, so good.
So we're not gonna do A budget today, we're just gonna do B, or we're gonna do A budget, but we're not gonna talk about it here. Uh, let's go down to your B budget, we'll look at, um, I guess first one right off the bat is travel mileage, you took that to zero?
No, that should be a thousand.
Oh, I mean.
We stayed the same.
Stayed the same.
Okay.
Okay, okay, awards, you jumped up a thousand, jumped up, uh.
Just a minute, you're jumping.
Office and aid awards, yep.
Office supplies.
And clothing allowances up.
Is that enough, Jeff, to set up that whole new division down there?
Else moving too fast here, I'm, I'm behind already.
Office, okay, an office supplies, you want a thousand dollars, is that gonna be enough to set up that new location?
Well, that's, I think between the thirty-five hundred that we constantly budget, we figured an extra thousand. I mean, most of this stuff we have down here is going with us. I mean, we might need some new whiteboards or something, some rugs, whatever. It, it should be enough. If not, we will get by with what we got and wait till next year. And it's gonna need dual monitors, you know.
It's already there. I can't do anything without dual monitors. I, I, I'm sorry. As difficult as it is with one.
I don't know how you guys keep tracking that. Okay, so let's move on down, you jumped awards a little bit. Um, clothing, you jumped five hundred. And we're still short one mechanic, is that right?
Yes.
Got any, uh, got any takers on that yet?
No.
Okay, supplies, road, you left that the same at twenty grand, you decreased those shop supplies.
No, we decreased that to forty, whether it fifty, we dropped it to forty.
And last year, so far this year, you spent fifteen. Last year, you spent twenty-five.
Right, show shop, shop supplies covers our, um, our oils, our, uh.
Oxygen bottles.
Pals.
And freeze, all that kind of stuff.
And freeze, all that stuff.
Norco.
Is the, is the new program allowing you better, uh, control on all of that kinda stuff?
We're slowly getting there. We're, Dee's doing an awesome job down there and she's doing a lot of updating and, yeah, it, it's, it's not a hundred percent running yet, but it's, we're, we're getting there. It's,
Good, good.
We can keep Dee there, so we're, we'll get there. So once you, you know, get swapped over from one, from where you're at now to the new shop, you'll be able to have a good inventory setup. Yes.
By everything you have.
Yep.
You don't have enough shelves and all that stuff for the new shop?
Um, a lot of our shelving's gonna go with us. Um, we do have a little bit. We're hoping in the building, in my new building budget, we don't know if we'll have enough this year, but we need to, we're gonna add a standalone mezzanine in the storage, so we can have two layers of storage. But right now, we're kinda, we don't know where we're gonna be until we actually move in.
Sure.
We might have plenty, we might, storage is a premium with, with us and probably with any, everybody. I figure we can just go rent some of these new mini storages that are going up around the county and.
Okay, let's move on down to welding shop.
What, before we go off that though, there, there may be a car wash though coming to Cascade soon.
Oh.
So know that, you know, we wouldn't have to put a car wash down to the new shop.
Oh, that, that'd be nice if we could set something up with them or. But as long as it, as long as it washes the underside also, because that's where all of our damage is happening.
Yeah, they gotta have an undercover.
It'll help, okay.
Let's go to welding shop. Now, in the last few years, you've only spent a little less than six grand. Cut it five, can you cut that more, or is that?
So twenty-three, I spent twenty-five thousand. We could probably cut some more. I mean, this year, I, I don't have an updated number, but through March, I was at a little under twelve thousand. We don't have a full-time welding, so we're, we're doing, we're doing most of the fab work ourselves, working off of old existing metal that we have.
Well, the price of steel's going through the roof, so I don't know, maybe better leave it at twenty?
Hold on a minute.
Well, you jumped from fifty-four.
I'm on the wrong line.
You're on the wrong line there.
I'm on the wrong one, that's my fault. Um, we dropped it down to twenty, so, twenty-two, we spent twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, we could try it, dropping it down to fifteen. Um, price of steel, just like the captain was saying, everything's just, you know, and we haven't put in a big steel order for a couple of years and we're holding off until we get moved, so that's just twenty thousand pounds of less stuff that we have to move, if we don't have to put in an order till we're out there.
Yeah. I think that's, you know, blades and all that stuff, it's, it's a huge.
Yeah, I'd, I'd feel more comfortable leaving it at twenty, but you guys.
Twenty then.
Okay.
Everything else stays the same until we get down to cellphone, and I'm assuming that's just more staff.
That's me, I'm sorry.
One new staff.
Where the heck?
Man.
Where you at?
I'm expecting, yeah, it's an expect.
Fifty dollars a month?
Fifty dollars a month? Okay. Um, electricity stays the same, but here's my question on that. Once you guys move out of those, the old existing, is all that, Doug, is you planning on shipping that over to the fair budget? Where's that electric bill gonna go and the water bill?
We've already kinda questioned that. Um, it, it will go to whoever takes it over.
That's the fair route.
So we left that at twenty-two because we don't know what the new power bill's gonna be at the new shop.
Technically, it doesn't go to the fair, it goes to Scott's budget, because those are still county buildings.
Right.
Not part of the fair.
It's gonna go into the general fund.
General fund then, okay.
So from what the architect's telling me, this is gonna be a all LEDs, super insulated, so the snow is designed to stay on the roof, not gonna slide off because of that insulation. We're hoping we, we cut this power bill.
Yeah, that'd be great.
On a lot.
Are you heating with propane or are you heating with electricity?
The new shop will be propane.
Propane.
Yep, it'll be overhead radiant in the shop.
Yep.
With tubes.
Big tubes.
And then it'll have a furnace that will run the offices.
And what about your used oil? What are you gonna do with that? And what about your used oil? What are you gonna do with that?
All of our used oil is going to Lake Fork in that oil burner. Because right now, they run out.
Okay.
And then we end up having to try to figure out how to ship oil up to Lake Fork or they're just running number two diesel in that burner to kind of help supplement on those cold months.
There's companies that are coming by it, but I'm paying much. So let's move on down. Everything stays the same, I guess. You know, with fuel costs, prices are kind of going down, but who knows what's gonna happen in twenty-three, you spend a hundred and seventy-seven.
Yep, so I I think at a hundred and seventy, we're okay. Should be. I mean, in at at the end of March, we were at almost eighty-five thousand. So we're gonna be right in line to meet that one seventy that we had budgeted for this year.
Kind of the same with diesel, aren't you?
Diesel's right about the same, yep.
Guess that pretty close.
Well, diesel's, we always budget high on that because if we, if it decides it starts snowing October fifteenth, it doesn't stop till May. Hard to tell.
The price of diesel from right here to McCall, seventy cents difference. What's wrong with that picture?
That's why I don't have a diesel pickup.
Yeah, that's ridiculous. I do. When I come down here on Mondays, I fill up down here.
Really? I didn't realize it was that big of a difference.
It's ridiculous.
Wow.
If you have new pieces of equipment that you're out masticating on the sides of the road with, um, that's new to the department environment, so I mean, you're gonna be putting a lot of mileage on those vehicles. Is that taken into account here?
Or roadside brushing? Yeah, we haven't even, I think we've used it for about a week right now, but now we're kind of in the mode of paving, so it'll be parked again for a couple of weeks and then it'll get going again. It that thing is really good on fuel. These, this new equipment, it's amazing on fuel.
How are you staffed right now?
I am fully staffed.
Awesome.
Hey, let's move on down to propane. You jumped that ninety-five hundred. I'm assuming that's because you're gonna have a new shop with a new heating system.
Yep, and we're
And that's a guess.
We're kind of guessing right now.
Okay, tires, you dropped that a grand.
Yep.
Looks like you haven't spent out your budget.
Um, that's another one to where we have a small stockpile of tires. But when commercial tire says, hey, tires are getting ready to jump up twenty-five percent, we'll we'll buy three, three or four thousand dollars worth of tires and get our stockpile back up.
I just priced tires for my Dodge and they were four hundred and eighty-seven apiece.
For your tires?
For tires. It was twenty-two hundred to replace four tires.
Ow.
Oh, my goodness.
So I think, you know, that might be something that you might want to think about.
Four tires aren't near that much.
That was a West Washington. And that's a Temple I told quite tired.
Yep. Wow.
Everything's going up and my wages. Three thousand dollars is not gonna buy you but about two sets of tires.
Well, that's, that's how much stockpile we got.
Okay.
We've probably got four sets of the tires that are on most of our pickups and some of our oddball twenty-inch wheels that we have. We've got one extra set.
And you know, that's the interesting thing I've learned is that if you buy a tire that's a seventeen and a half inch rim, that's the most expensive tire. If you can get seventeens or eighteens or twenties, they're not near as much as a seventeen and a half inch.
Go buy a Toyota, they got nineteen inch.
Yeah, and it's just like, why did you guys make this standard?
I know.
Uh, the rest you've left the same. Um, let's see, we increased batteries, antifreeze, yeah, and antifreeze is twelve, thirteen dollars a gallon now instead of what it used to be.
Yep.
Engineering.
Okay, so the engineering. Uh, we've talked through this with Doug and Dan's new enough to where we're not quite sure how much he's gonna save us. So I think from the time he started a couple of weeks ago till middle of next year, we'll have an idea of we can look at parametric bills and.
I think that's awesome, and I would really ask if you could guys kind of contract that. See how much you've really saved in engineering costs. That was kind of part of that one decision to go with higher salary and all that stuff with what we're gonna save on that.
We're already, Finn is already talking to him and me and, you know, what can you do for drainage engineering and all this stuff, but.
And he has his own drone now, so he can fly and look for coverts, that
Yeah.
that kind of stuff.
Gonna deliver my guy's lunch in Yellow Pine.
Remember too, when we're, when we're charging these fees, our money just comes back into the county. And they were saying it wasn't gonna save us any money, but it it truly does. We charge the developer and it stays here instead of having to pay it to it.
Yeah, so so that, I mean, we can not quite sure what Dan's making, but we can take the hourly that we get from parametrics and apply that to his time he's spending on certain things and I mean.
Just if you can, try and track it.
He should be charging his hourly rate the same that we're paying parametrics on these certain projects, so we can see where we're at.
A lot of times our our schedules are the poor aid. I come in on Friday to do a little extra work so I can focus on things ahead and that would, and that's one of them.
Good, good. And like you said, it's a warning curve, but I'm hoping that in the future, that number will go down, that outside engineering.
It will.
Yeah. Hey, let's look at buildings and fixtures. You dropped that three grand. You're gonna have all new shop, all new fixtures.
Yep.
So that could eventually kind of go even lower if.
And and really, a lot of this building and fixtures is fixtures is coming out of Scott's budget if we gotta get new lights or a new light or whatever. So, yeah, we that's our reasoning behind dropping it.
Does it have to do like, I mean, furniture too and different things?
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll end up buying some of this stuff on our own.
Sure.
But I mean, we've still gotta get Dan a desk, so hopefully we'll pull that out of this year's.
Sure, he's sitting on the floor. Just.
Oh, he's a happy camper.
I'm just kidding.
They got those little fold-up tables, you know, the hard tables?
Big table.
Yeah, I got the, the big table.
He's got the conference room.
The Rentlandlys, is that your spot in Donley?
That's the spot in Donley and that's our two repeater rentals. The two repeater rental sites are a hundred and seventy-five a month, I believe. So that and then the eight thousand or whatever that we're paying guest friends for.
Does that go up this year? Is Terry, is anything on that there?
I asked her a few years ago, instead of waiting fifteen years and jumping at seventeen percent to try to get on a two percent or three percent, whatever.
We haven't heard yet?
Haven't heard yet.
You might want to dinger again on that, just for sure.
Okay.
That's on those three bay pole barn that they have behind your place there.
Yeah, we only, we use it a little bit in the summertime, but in the wintertime, it's we've got three pieces of equipment there. We've got a fuel tank there.
How much is that a month per bay?
A bay, well, it's
Hey, you're hurting my brain, Neil.
Eighty-seven for the year, right? Eight seven hundred?
How much did we pay him last year, Doug? Sorry.
Buy that by twelve.
That's seven hundred and twenty-five a month.
Yeah, see, it's it's pretty cheap, really, if you.
And then we pay the power bill too.
Pay the power bill on top of that.
Yeah.
Seven hundred and twenty-five a month for three bays. Eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
How much?
Eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
So eighty-seven hundred dollars a year, those, but.
That's seven thirty a month.
My mind is cheap because we don't have any other place.
We don't have another spot.
We don't have any county property in that area to
I'm sure.
Build something that's feasible enough for our three plows to access from Donley, because from Donley, our three plows go each way. If we moved a good lane, then two of those gotta drive all the way back to Donley on the highway to start their route. With chains on and whatever else, so.
And have that conversation that's next year or now is.
Yeah, you guys are gonna eventually look at maybe building our own facilities in that area. Let's move on down lease, heavy equipment. You jumped that twenty-five grand. What are you looking at? Or trucks, lease, that kind of stuff?
So right now, things that come out of that are my snow removal contracts that I pay the guy in High Valley to plow with. I was paying a guy in Yellow Pine to plow. We've got two guys, got a guy in McCall that plows one of our roads that we have a hard time getting our truck into. We've got another guy that plows Flat Place. I thought there was another one on that one. But yeah, that comes out of that. And plus, the arena farms. Remember that?
Yeah, but it's not an arena. What was that for?
So he's a contractor. He lived in Trail's End Subdivision. It snowed in all winter. We paid him a lot of money, but me and Dan just went back there last week and this guy has done phenomenal work. He's kept the you you come off the Forest Service Road onto ours and it's like going from dirt to pavement. He's cleaned out all my culverts. He's taken rocks off the road. He's taken trees off the road.
Oh, so he's taking care of the road itself?
Yes. Doing a little bit of bridge work on the Pilot Creek Bridge right now. Um, that's why I'm so far over on that one because this kind of started after, I think it was like November when he said he was available. He goes, geez, I I take care of your road back here anyways all winter. Well, you shouldn't be doing it for free.
Well, I agree with that. We also have to make sure that, I mean, he's living back there. He wants to improve it for personal use. Let's make sure he doesn't over-improve it for the area.
He's not, he, he, he's meeting our specs for that road.
Okay.
And we haven't been able to, it's, it's a logistical nightmare to get. I had Dan jump a couple of times on that road because it's
It's not fun.
It's not fun.
Spots.
And to get
On the Forest Service.
And to get our equipment in there and a crew, we gotta pull a camper to the bottom for the guys to stay in. We gotta get our excavator, our backos, our road graders, everything else down to the bottom to do what this guy did all winter long.
That's awesome.
And I think anytime we can encourage locals to kind of take care of their own issues, I think that's outstanding. That's more.
That's like a
But I'm gonna take care of mine for free, Jeff. I'm not gonna.
And I've, I've told Dan, I don't know how many times since he started, I go, I wish more people would be part of the
The solution.
Part of the solution instead of part of the problem.
Yeah, because contracting out, I mean, it pays for itself.
It does.
It does.
Yeah, it was just, I mean, I was just almost flabbergasted at how good he had that road.
That's awesome. That was awesome.
Okay, let's move on down. You let, let the next three kind of stay the same. Till we get down to freight and you drop freight, which I think is probably appropriate. And most of that is what, parts?
Yeah, we get, you know, McCall Delivery brings stuff up for us when needed. Sometimes we've got just, just UPS freight, FedEx freight, all that stuff, but we we dropped that because, I mean, we're we hit twelve thousand a couple of years ago. Last year was seven thousand. This year, we're right in line for probably seven thousand. So that was the justification for lowering that one.
Okay, we'll move on down. Everything stays the same until we get to uh, education other. I'm assuming that's for your different classifications of road tech?
Yes, education others, those classes we put the crew through at LTAC.
Have you made any road signs or street signs this year?
We raised education other also for Dan. Um, he's got certain certifications he's gotta get every year to keep his license.
Sure.
And he kind of gave us some numbers kind of put in there to make sure he keeps his certification up.
Hey, let's move on down to other road bridge construction. Um, you dropped that fifty grand.
Oh, one second. Jeff, have you not bought road signs and street signs at all?
We've got a big order sitting there getting ready to go to order and it's probably gonna be at least six thousand dollars probably. And we do one big sign order a year.
Okay.
And speaking of signs, what did we do money that we have to buy signs? Oh, the the gun range thing up it that parcel L? I don't know. If we buy those signs, or does P and Z buy those signs for no shooting and all that stuff? Who do, who does that purchase?
Where, what?
Parcel L on Warren Wagon, Green Gate, all that. Yeah, but I think you guys order those signs, don't you? You don't?
No, they can get those through Rocky Mountain Signs, whoever, whoever is responsible for it.
Just wanna make sure somebody knew that.
Could come out of my budget. Has nothing to do with my roads.
Hey, then let's go to road bridge construction. You dropped that fifty grand.
Yep. So so that is my culverts, which I still have a big order I gotta get in this year. Um, my fabric, track sealant, patch material.
Patch material.
Yeah. And we're, I'm just going off of what the we've, in the last three years, we have repaved some of my nightmare roads that have been costing us thirty thousand dollars a year to patch them. Plus my crew time, it's 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 getting lower because we're spending less money on patch material.
And also, Jeff, while I'm thinking about it, we got an email from Ken Roberts on Davis. Rick Road, you guys are gonna grind that this year?
Already ground. They should be.
Did they come through out to the highway or did they leave that first section?
Uh, first section's fine. It's newer. Ken had to redo that.
He was worried about us grinding that brand new.
We're going from Coscale to just barely pass the pit entrance.
You guys run top of that.
Yep.
So Jeff, so Dan, have you looked to see the patching material that we're using? Do you agree that that is the best way?
I have no idea.
Okay. I'm getting complaints on Warren Wagon. Um, I just told him to call you and talk to you, but there's some large potholes out there. We've been patching it every couple of months. They lose the patch material immediately, so you know, we need to make sure that we're patching appropriately, so we're not out there. Like you said, labor costs are huge. So if we're not using the correct patch or the design of the way that we're patching, we need to relook at that and make sure that we're doing it correct.
So we're patching correctly. This QPR is one of the best ones out there. The best patch material is hot mix. But in the wintertime, we can't get hot mix. And trying to get in the wintertime, we use bagged patch material. It's the same material, but it's in a bag. And it freezes, it gets hot, it freezes, it gets hot. And that's why some of that stuff's popping out in the winter and the spring because it's, it's not top-notch stuff. We're doing what we can. But when we patch it next time, it should hold until the road starts moving in October from the freezing and rains and snows and.
Is it the same stuff that ITD uses, that gray stuff?
I actually bought some of that and have used it. Horrible, expensive, but it stays. It's concrete, basically concrete.
Is that what it is?
Concrete.
Some of their stuff is even busting out too.
It does. Our, our roads and our traffic up here now is back to Sherry's deal of doing it correctly. We have four hundred thousand potholes a year to do them correctly. Yes, they should be cut out. We don't have time to do that. We would never get
Couldn't get them all there.
A lot of these, I mean, we blow them out with the leaf blower, kind of break the crumbly edges off, put it in there, pack it down with our plate whackers and I would say ninety percent of them stay.
It's just the highest priority roads. I think, you know, we need to make sure that maybe we are doing it, so it's a five-year patch instead of a six-month patch, you know? I'm just asking you guys to look at it, make sure we buy the appropriate material
Yep.
to do that. And some of those high, high-traffic roads, Warren Wagon's one of them, I mean, it's just a huge, obviously.
Yep, and 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 a lot of that's traffic. I mean, it's, what happens is pavement's kind of falling apart around it. We break it out, patch it. And then this little chunk over here, alligators falls apart, water gets underneath our patch, boom, there goes our patch.
Jeff, I had another question for you too. I know you guys crack seal. How wide of a crack can you seal up with a crack seal machine?
Oh, we do. Most of our cracks aren't any wider than two inches.
Because we have some at the title company in that upper parking lot that are um, two inches plus.
You're, you're pushing it. This stuff stays, stays flexible for pretty much forever. But you gotta get that grass that's growing in the bottom of it. If there's grass growing in it, you gotta get that out of there, so either lancing it with the torch. So, either lancing it with the torch or then preheating the edges with the torch before you put the crack sealant in tends to help. But once you crack seal, you need to seal it right afterwards. You need to seal the whole parking lot.
Yeah.
And a lot of that wide cracking like that is an asphalt issue. Doesn't have the polymers in it to let it stretch and move with the ground, and it'll shrink over the years. And most of those are transverse cracks that you see across our roads. That's from the asphalt shrinking.
It's on your chip ceiling. You haven't used any this year, is that correct?
That's gonna happen in August. And as per Commissioner's request, after the budget was approved last year, I dropped... I'm only spending a little bit less than five hundred thousand.
And that got you, how, what, twenty miles of road? How many miles was it? I just read that.
A hundred and twenty-eight thousand square yards.
Hang your weight above my mask, George.
String that out to a mile.
So, it was all of Heinrich. It's been cleaned up to the dump from farm to market. West Lakeport from the highway to Nusula. What was the other one?
Are you guys gonna do...
Do you have one down here?
Pretty good out here that you've ground last year.
Not this year.
That'll be next year?
Hopefully, yeah. There was another road on there. I can't remember what. It was like six miles of road.
You guys doing it, is that correct?
What's that?
You guys are doing it? Your contract?
No, this is a contract.
Okay.
I talked to Dan. I want to get back into the chip ceiling, but our equipment needs to go away, and we need something newer than forty years old. It's budget stuff.
Crushing or...
Old State Highway from the highway to Loomis was the other one.
That's right. Well, you cut back on your road construction and chips, but you added on down to crushing. And I know we kind of did the opposite a few years back, so now we're getting back into making more.
So, crushing should be about an every other year deal. If I can get three hundred to five hundred thousand, get a contractor up here, we get a better price. If we can do three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars, because that's less mow, and they'll give us a better price if, unless, instead of coming in and giving us a hundred thousand and packing up and leaving two weeks later. Oh, it's time to do another pretty good-sized crushing to get our good pit back up.
Were there any crushes involved out at Yellow Pine?
Oh, that pit is depleted. We're paying the lease on that just for storage of our gravel.
But we crushed everything we had there. We're done with that.
Yes, Bell Dust Pit is depleted. We got the four point nine acres from Boise National five years ago. We did a crushing on there. And we're, I just closed out the timber sale on that four point nine acre this morning. With the redo of the Stibnite Road and the Profile Creek mitigation for the FEMA stuff that we have to still do, that should almost deplete our pile in Yellow Pine.
And then that lease with Donna will go away?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, right now, it's that thirteen thousand dollars a year just to keep our material in there.
Hey, now, I know this year you guys are gonna actually do some paving yourself. Is that five hundred thousand gonna cover that?
Yes. And that's including hiring that pulverizer that Valley Paving used to do the contract roads. We're actually, we did Lake Trail Cascade, Wildwood, and Wagon Wheel yesterday.
Thanks.
No, on Friday. Yesterday, we did Hill House Loop. Today, we should be moving up to Wisdom West Valley. And then we're gonna pulverize Little Lake, the creek road from Boat Ramp to the end. And we'll probably leave that gravel until next year.
You did gold dust too?
That was under the contract.
Yep.
That's awesome. We're tailing what it's currently doing.
That's awesome.
Good deal. I think eventually down the road, we're gonna have to look at Martin South.
Yes.
On the highway west, and that road's really come apart the last few years too. But you guys will be discussing that. Okay, let's move on down. You increased your crushing, two hundred thousand to three. We talked about that. Stabilization, give us a discussion on that.
Stabilization is mag chloride, the calcium chloride. I've had fifty thousand in there every year, trying to get the Forest Service to pitch in a little bit so we can do the east fork.
It won't do it.
Not really happening, so not a priority. That's why I dropped that down to ten.
And you know, Jeff, I think a lot of the roads that we did do mag chloride on, it's the wrong material, and in the spring, it's wet. It's just terrible.
I got a couple of roads right here that, yeah, in Cascade that...
We're gonna have to think of something different there. I don't know what.
Well, we're trying to get this, been working on a permit since Carol Brockman was here, some kind of a permit to... So, we can go out and look at the road and go, ah, 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 don't put mag chloride on it, put earth bind. Mag chloride on a native road that does not have gravel on it, it rains, it turns to slime.
Oh, my goodness.
And every year, they put it on there. It gets deeper in the ground. Bud gets deeper.
And who's using that? Where is it being used in the county?
We use it everywhere. But some people, like L, he puts earth bind on his road. Goslin Loop, the Far South Road, he magged it a few years ago after I told him not to and what was gonna happen and...
Well, these are private roads?
Private roads use, yeah, they, a lot of people...
Northern County roads.
North American.
You're confusing me on what Carol is working on or was working on.
A permit, so people would have to come through us to get a permit to put mag chloride on the road.
Does mag chloride only work on good gravel roads?
Yes.
Okay.
Some native roads, but I think that's part of what happened to West Mountain years ago, was they got a grant through the EPA or somebody to mag chloride that whole thing and...
It was the worst thing we ever did. That was terrible.
And who's they?
I don't know who did. It was back before I was the boss. It was probably...
I was part of the three nineteen that we were getting years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess that I'm still a little awfully gone Goslin Loop. Who's putting mag chloride on it if that's our road?
Private homeowners. They hired North American to come in. This happens all over the county.
But this is our road?
Yep.
So, why do you need a permit?
Like I do at the corner in front of my house, I don't have to tell, get a permit from Jeff to do it. I just do it. And it costs me around twelve hundred bucks a year.
Yeah.
And it's going up and up and up every year. But it works better than the mag chloride.
So, I can see what's coming around. Some lawyer somewhere in the past. It's just like making these snow removal people get permits to plow our road. These guys are putting a sealant on county roads, willy-nilly. There's no difference. I mean...
So, it's destroying the county road. So, is, do you have Oki working on this?
Right when he first started, we were talking to him about it, and we'll get something put together now that Dan's here to kind of help us.
Anybody that's working in a county right away should have a permit to do so, and we should know what they're putting on it.
So, we've got all of North Americans. We can't really do a bond with them or anything, but they've given us all their insurance information. They're covered to work on our roads. If something happens, they're covered. But the individuals that hire them, they're, North America's real good about calling me ahead of time saying, do you know we're coming up next Wednesday? And like, quick, because it's a benefit to us having the individuals pay twelve hundred dollars a year to put stabilizer on it, because every little grain of dust that goes out into Farmer Hasbrook's field is part of our road.
So, the other interesting thing is years ago, when we first started using earth bind, they had a pavement product in that that actually made a quarter-inch thick crust on that road, and it lasted for a couple of years. They don't sell that product anymore. They took the pavement, that's what they called it, out of it. But it's still a good base. It'll get me through the summer.
Right.
Mag chloride will last about a month, and then it's just gone.
On some roads.
Yeah, it depends on the traffic.
Right gravel, it'll, this valley is really good to hold mag chloride, because we get moisture every night in the atmosphere. And it'll, mag and calcium is salt base, so it'll suck the moisture out of the air and reactivate. Yeah, throughout the summer, it gets, it lessens. And on high-traveled roads, like West Mountain up by No Business, with that traffic in there and the UTVs, they might get a month out of it.
Yeah, if you're lucky.
Yeah, if you're lucky.
Okay, let's, so that kind of explains stabilization.
So, why wouldn't we use that line and leave it and put something on West Mountain?
Certain areas of West Mountain will hold it. Certain areas, uh-uh. That's what, that's what made that road go to goo about fifteen years ago.
Not mag chloride, but earth bind or something else.
It's, earth bind's expensive. To do West Mountain, you're probably looking at eighty thousand dollars probably, that middle section.
Mine was twelve hundred bucks, and it does, I think, two hundred feet of road.
Yeah, so earth bind is kind of the same as mag. The more traffic you put on it, the higher speed you put on it, it falls apart.
Okay, let's move on down to, let's striking the same contracts paving. We're gonna do our own paving, right?
That and going over the money with Doug a couple of weeks ago.
Plus, we know we get ours.
We've kind of, like, you know what? Let's hold off a year and see where our budget's gonna be here in a couple of years, a year and a half.
Okay.
It's also good to give you a transportation plan as a whole. Start to prioritize certain sections. You know, as any of these roads I went on, it's just certain sections that are really bad. So, I can evaluate the sections. And leftover, that's really what we need. Get your hands around it. It's gonna take a little bit of time.
We need to see if our funding comes in with SRS too, and what your budget's gonna be for that building, because that's, you know, we don't know how much we're gonna need to finish that building, so...
Yeah, we'll get down to that at the bottom of this page.
Okay, let's move, we left fencing the same, paving the same, construction the same, bridge replacement.
Okay, so the bridge replacement. This nine hundred thousand was for the Profile Creek Bridge this year. We got one bid on it, and it was way, way too much. This is a one hundred percent reimbursable expenditure. Forest Service didn't give me enough money to reimburse for construction, so we're sitting on the bridge.
Bridge is out of gold dust now?
Gold dust.
So, what is the plan to get the Forest Service to throw in more?
So, they want to stay with their same dollar amount, which they still have. What they want to do, and I gotta figure out how this works, is we're gonna bid it out ASAP again. But we're gonna give them a two-year construction window. So, we're not throwing a bid out there in February saying, hey, this has got to be done by October first. These guys are going, I'm gonna throw a million-dollar bid out there, because if we get that, we can cancel these two. We had our Forest Service meeting last week, and Ben Dryer said, we have really good luck getting lower bids if they can give them a two-year work window. So, the four hundred thousand will be for the construction of the bridge, putting it in. And if it doesn't go for this year, if the contractor bids on it and says, hey, we'll do this in 2026, I'm not gonna spend that four hundred thousand next year, but it'll roll into 2026.
As the Forest Service reimburs you for the bridge that's sitting out of gold dust though, that's still unpaid, right?
Uh, I'm kind of sort of fighting them right now, because they can't give us full reimbursement on it until it's installed.
Until it's installed.
So, we are hoping to get a fifty percent reimbursement on it.
Because we already have the bridge.
We have the bridge. It got delivered a few months ago.
I mean, it seemed like they weren't willing to work with us on it. But nothing in writing.
Yeah. They're gonna push to get fifty percent reimbursement to us. That bridge was four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
That'd be nice to have at least half of it in...
How do you move a bridge all the way out to profile?
Logging trucks.
Oh, my goodness.
That's how we've moved them into Big Creek and that country. We use...
Takes most of the day.
Had Morgan loaded on logging trucks that the bunks were cut off, and that way, those sharp corners is just like a...
Wow.
Yeah.
You flag in front of us.
Oh, yeah, there are three or four flag vehicles going.
Next one, RS two four seven seven. And speaking of that, I appreciate your response yesterday on the Hart Log Road. I need to maybe have a little more research with Phil on that, because it's like, I don't remember there with that, seeing that on a list anywhere.
Like I said, it doesn't go anywhere.
No, it's washed out and ends.
But it never connected anywhere from what I know. Went out to Trapper Creek, and no, we just kind of dead-ended.
So, this twenty thousand, is this for the gal, the person we hired to help us with that?
No, so this is what I pay my guys per diem out of when they're back there working.
Oh, okay.
And I've also started charging the arena farms to that line item, since I'm so far over on the other one, because that's also, that's an RS two four seven seven road back there, so...
Why are we going down? Our maintenance costs aren't gonna go down. You're taking it down by ten thousand?
Well, I've never, I've never even come close to spending that. This year, I, this year I will. I will hit that thirty thousand this year.
We're gonna get thirty-one this year.
If you get...
I told you we'd hit that thirty.
You got until October.
Well, it's a, we started paying arena farms out of the rent lease heavy equipment. And then I started thinking about it. It's like, he's actually doing our work for us on this RS two four seven seven road, so let's move him over to that line item.
So, do you want to re, go back and re-figure what that should be?
I mean, we...
A new number?
We could probably...
It's gonna be a wash in the budget, but I think it still should be a line item increase there, a reduction in the other one.
We will revisit that one.
Okay.
Three nineteen grants, Jeff? I don't even know if they're still available.
They are.
Are they?
They're just capped.
Actually, I just had a culvert delivered last week for Gibson Creek.
What is the three nineteen?
The Soil Conservation District?
Soil and Water.
And we used to get about four hundred and seventy thousand. And then it just went away.
Eight, thirty-five thousand. I don't see that you spent anything in twenty-three and nothing this year, but you're telling us that you're gonna spend some between now and October.
Well, yeah, because I think next, the next billing cycle will be, there will be a bill in there for, I think eighteen thousand dollars for the culvert.
The one that washed down the...
So, do we have to...
We're actually gonna try to get up there as soon as we're done here with Dan's drone and see if we can find that culvert.
So, do you have to get the grant first from Soil and Water? You know you have that grant already?
Arena does, does this for us every year. And she's been good at getting it every year. And I've asked them to also do the four oh four permits for me, just to kind of help, help things move along.
And I would bet almost that if we ever have to replace that fish culvert at Tamarack, we can use this kind of funding through them, and they can get us more money for that.
Small part of it. It probably won't be over thirty-five thousand, and that, that structure's probably gonna be right close to a quarter million.
Yeah, and I bet they can finance more, if they, because it has to do with fish too.
Right.
Opens up a lot of avenues.
Yep.
Okay, you left a flap grant at a hundred thousand. Have you spent any money on that?
No, because it's... So, the flap grant is Federal Lands Access Program.
Okay.
So, if a road accesses federal property, which that one does, this is for Lake Shore. It came in at a little over four million for, to redo that road. If it accesses forest property, we can apply for a flap grant through LTAC. We've been really successful on getting these every time we apply. But this one here, they've had... But this one here, they've had change over in Western Federal Lands over in Seattle or wherever they're at over there. Vancouver personnel switching and.
It's uh, it's gonna go. It's it's a uh, it's a grant that we can hit it, it's a couple of years out. What it does is it allows a sponsor, the county to save. So you're gonna see like uh. A monetary agreement first in place, so you'll see that prior to any. Signing contracts. I'm I'm talking on another side of what I used to work with them. They're they're really, they're really, it's a really hard struggle to get them to communicate. And so I'm hoping that since I'm here, I'll be directly linked. So what? Okay, so say here, say it's a Bear Basin Road that's going into the federal land. Is it only used to improve that road up to the Forest Service boundary, not work over in the forest? Is uh, so it is actually a little bit of both.
Yeah.
So if they, if they have a campground that they want to improve, they can also uh work, work together with the county. Forest Service and actually be co, you have to actually have a co signature on it because it's federal lands.
Right.
Have to tie it. So they can do improvements that in fact, I think some, some of them have. Fish and game, they also do it, so passage. So there's a lot of these improvements along the way. Encompasses both uh county owned facility or one that.
It has to access federal property. It has to access or be directly adjacent to.
Right, okay. Okay, so now this hundred thousand, you're saying that we can save that over a period of years?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
There's a revenue line that this buddy is in.
What our plan is, is to uh create a trust specifically for that. They'll prepare a claim form. Uh, to have that money come out of that account and then once that is done, we will put it in a trust. And we will only use that trust when we have the entire match available and the grant is awarded.
So this is like what we do with Wardway.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Forty million dollar road, we saved a million.
So the match on this is about four hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, perfect, perfect.
Right, right about there. So we figured four years, a hundred thousand a year.
Yeah.
Pretty easy to take that, put it in a trust and that way it's there when they say, hey, we need your signature saying that. You have your match ready to go.
We can say we do.
State local agreement, I think is what it's called, something like that.
Awesome, awesome, good thinking. Now let's talk about LTAC. Cut that one half million bucks.
Okay, so this was East Lake Fork Road. This is a Dan one.
This is, this is one that I I I helped uh part of the administration at LTAC. And uh currently the issue is the wetlands mitigation. It's gotta be on hold. You don't wanna necessarily do onsite mitigation, it's just gonna cost the county. Successful, it's better to go to a wetlands bank, so we're trying to. At this point, uh LTAC and ITD are kind of working together. Wetlands mitigations, not this whole area, let's see if there's an opportunity. This particular project is not scheduled for construction till. So we've got.
Keeps getting pushed back.
We did a few uh years to get it kind of figured out. So at this point, uh we had to put the project on hold. Just a little bit of, see a little bit of uh invoicing. And we asked them to do to prep for it.
So Dan, just from my own personal uh knowledge, how does somebody roll their wetlands into a bank?
This is.
It was interesting. This is uh, this is interesting because uh and and um part of where a lot of my projects came from. They actually have a. And what they do is uh over um a long period of time. And a committee, committee is set up as part of a trust format for them so they can. Get uh their maintenance reestablished or. Amount of money that the quality of the the bank itself is how much you have to pay. And uh as far as I know, the part of that committee was uh four, yay. Three parties that oversaw the. It it's um. It's really a struggle. At least that's what the. Because they actually, over time, figured out what was successful. So wasn't like, here's, here's some, you know.
You gotta create with.
You gotta create it with the quality of the soil and the material that goes in. In hopes that wildlife comes out. My hope is, this is my hope. Is that uh we do establish something in the area and that we could utilize it. Type of projects where we can just give them a little bit of money and they go do it and create the thing. Quality base. Um, I just, it's gonna take a lot of time to do that. Is it gonna be ready for the twenty twenty-eight? Cause if, you know, if LTAC and ITD come together and know that they're, they have to do something. To wetlands. And in most cases, they have to do it.
Right, that's what I always thought too.
Maintain it. It's just, it's never successful.
No, especially the maintenance part.
Sounds like a side meeting.
So uh.
Yeah, it's something that, you know, I've looked at at the ranch, cause I'm creating a lot of gravel pits that are gonna eventually be ponds. And it's amazing how they've already grown all the cattails and all the stuff you need for wetlands is all coming up on its own.
You know, I wonder, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reach out to the. Cause I know that they were looking at. An additional site to create one. Supposed to be in Washington.
Well, I appreciate that. And not only, I, sometimes those leaves should come back and bite you as a landowner, but it'd be a lot of restriction.
It 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 would be a a challenge uh to have one. But if it, if it's successful, long term, it's the best course for any project.
So the next time, Jeff, you guys are out of the barn throwing my gravel pit, is that what I think would never qualify? Cause we are building a live stream, live, live action.
If it matches the criteria.
If it's what they're looking for.
It has a lot to do with the soil. What kind of soil is there and if it would be successful long.
So that wouldn't, okay.
I'll have to, I'll, 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 what I'll do, if you guys are interested, I'll put together a little uh link. Of their actual site. And uh I think I might even have an old.
So it wouldn't have anything to do with bridges, that just has has to do with.
I mean, for wetlands mitigation off along a bridge, a lot of times that you can do that. Impacts of that bridge if you're widening it more.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, essentially replacing that S bridge from the straight across there. Just looking for options.
Now, that, I mean, that would be one where the opinion on how that goes will impact it in some way.
Oh, sure.
Will. And then in that particular location, you you might be more successful at allowing it to be onsite. Just because of the terrain internal.
Sure. I'm just looking for options, so that's, that's a good one to hear. Okay. I think we're down to the grant, Epstein Bridge. Okay, Epstein Bridge. We dropped that eight hundred thousand. Um. We're still working on the right of way. Um, we've got all the signatures except for one. And this person doesn't want a notary to come to her house. He don't want to come in here to emerit title. This is all over twenty-five hundred dollars.
Oh my goodness.
So we're, I'm I'm still in communications, we're, we're trying to figure out how to make this work.
What about electronic? I mean.
I think it's gotta be in-person notary. A notary would have to come from out here, go into Yellow Pine, knock on their door, have them sign it.
But she doesn't want the notary to come to her house, will she meet him in the middle somewhere?
She doesn't go out, period.
How about?
Probably doesn't do electronic anything.
And she's in Yellow Pine? How about we get ahold of Kat? And have Kat talk to her.
So I, I'm already, I'm kind of, I'm one step ahead of you. I've talked to Cecil's wife, he's my contractor back there. And that's what she told me is, we need to have one of us go with the notary. I was like, okay, can you guys set it up? Well, that was over a week ago and I haven't heard back, so it's time for me to push the buttons again.
Yeah. That'd be way to.
Yeah, cause we've, we've got to have this, luckily enough, they extended this EDA grant through twenty twenty-five. But if we're six, seven months out to get a bridge built and construction. We don't want to lose this, cause we've got over four hundred thousand dollars wrapped up in this thing already, so we gotta get this thing done.
Yeah, that's the way to do that, yeah.
All right, rack grants, I mean, they don't even have the rack approved.
Okay, so, so for last year, or for twenty-four, we got approved for the Lit Creek rack grant. That was three hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars reimbursable. And we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with our manpower hauling the rock up there to fix Lit Creek.
You're gonna do it before October?
Uh, we don't have to do it this year, that stretches through twenty twenty-five.
What's rack stand for, Jeff?
Uh, it's the big horns on a deer.
These, these grants come through the SRS and that's Title Two. So every time we get Title Two funds, they go into a pool of funds and then there's a board that actually oversees that pool of funds for rack grant requests. But they are congressionally approved and it's been, I put my application in five years ago. And still don't have it approved. So we just have to go through the entire thing all over again.
So that's what we did no business off of. Last year was a rack grant, regraveling, no business. Rack grant won't pay for the whole project, they're, they're there to help you.
Just to capital.
Pay for the crushing or pay for this extra little bit of crushing to do this.
Kind of a capital improvement piece that you could use.
So rack, the A and the C is Advisory Committee, I believe, but I'm not quite sure what the R stands for.
Resource, Resource Advisory Committee.
Yeah, there you go.
More academics. Okay, let's move on down, you left both those same and then vehicles and equipment.
Okay, so Mickey has figured out all of our lease payments.
Okay.
To cover these lease payments next year plus uh. Um, we're gonna, I need to get two three-quarter ton pickups for the road department. And. Some fusion blanks to weld on our snow buckets and stuff. That was the main, it was basically those two pickups and our lease payments on the equipment we have.
Where do you buy the sheriff's vehicles out of?
Yes.
And these are specific for you. Jeff, do you have any kind of a spreadsheet on how many vehicles you have and length and your vehicle miles? You can send us that, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
Hey, communications, you left the same office equipment, you dropped down to zero, you sure you don't want to keep that in there?
Office equipment is all through IT. If we need a new printer or if we need. Scanners or whatever, that all comes through IT. And we're taking all of our stuff with us, cause it's all pretty much new, our computers and our printer and.
Okay, so then let's move on down, capital billings, I'm assuming this is for the new shop?
Yep, and that's kind of a number that we came up with. So I mean, I, I agreed to pull a million out of my budget to. Three and a half. Arpa? You guys agree three and a half? Up to four and a half, so I was gonna do a million, million five, just to make sure it gets funded.
That'll take you up to five million on that project. That should be a strong number.
It should be strong, and I'm counting on all the six hundred and some thousand we got back from FEMA, that's gonna help.
Yep.
Sale of the Idaho Power property out in our pit, two hundred and thirty thousand, gets us up to nine hundred thousand or whatever. So that's kind of what I'm counting on to pick up that difference.
And they come in, is that Thursday they get the CUP Idaho Power, this Thursday?
They had their meeting last Thursday.
Now, did they get it approved?
You got your permit for the building now, don't you?
Yes, I'm, we're, we're moving forward, uh, actually. Yesterday, I think, was kind of the deadline to have everything in so they could get the ninety percent plans out.
Right, cool. We should be seeing those and then you go out for a bid on that structure.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're out far enough now, everything started like a wildfire and I mean, ah.
Yeah.
Oh, we're gonna be in there by such and such date. Well, now we're kind of looking at maybe September of twenty twenty-five moving in. Which everything just needs to slow down a little bit and I'm. Yeah, I've never done a big project like this, so I was, I was trying to save the money by doing some of this myself. Well, Dan's watched me try to go dig that.
I'm trying to help him. He, he, he wants to take on too much and I think it's just. You know, hi- his time is better spent on other items.
There hasn't been a day that I haven't said, I gotta go out and start digging that hole. Well, I started that three weeks ago, almost a month ago, and I still haven't even scratched the ground out there yet, so.
First day, I've been hearing this and I'm like, I don't think it's happening.
Hire, hire somebody to go dig that hole, Jeff. Well, that, that's what we're, that's kind of where we're at now, Dan, and Oki's been talking and Doug and. Like, okay, I just, I, I can't get this done, I just, unless I come in on a Saturday and Sunday, but Saturdays and Sundays, I'm doing work around the house, so.
Uh, you take care of your family, buddy. Take care of your family.
Okay.
Okay, let's go on down, uh, right away you left the same development funds. Do we have like a, a pretty up to date what you've received? I don't see any.
Doug's got, Doug should have it. Um, this is kind of looking into the future on what's gonna be coming to us. Like McGregor Town sites, uh, Arna Valley, any of that stuff, whether or not it comes to us as cash. Or if they expend it. Whether or not it comes to us as cash, or if they expend it, we don't, we don't know yet. So we didn't just pick this number out of the air, but Doug said that's a pretty safe number to go off of.
Be able to receipt those funds, if that CIP comes in on.
It's to expend those funds.
To expend those funds.
Yeah, we have a revenue line, uh, to bring them in, but the one that you're looking at right now is to expend those funds.
Okay.
We have collected sixty-three thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars in, uh, development agreements so far.
We've got those broke down on, in my office on a whiteboard.
Good, 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 good.
Eight, eight thousand here, four thousand there. AMR is the big one on the board cuz they gave us fifty-eight thousand dollars or something like that.
Well, we just got a check from, um, Dave Chug, Chug Mountain.
Yeah, GMR.
Oh, is that, okay.
Sorry.
Chug Mountain, that makes sense.
Another acronym, AMR.
You got me all confused.
That was for fifty-six thousand.
Yep. Hey Gabby, where are we going next?
Oh, I thought I was gonna be able to leave. Or this one will be easy. I'm still up in the air on the patrol vehicle, so we're gonna straighten that out right now.
We need to do something to get it, so that I, I get totally lost when we're doing one, two, and three vehicles all the time.
Well, you, you watched me throw my arms up, I'm.
Yeah, it's.
I, I came up with, I, I've looked at this pretty close. Personally, with the ordering issues we have, the timeline to get them after we order them. I suggested three a year. I know the CIP, we agreed on two, but looking at it from here on out, we need to budget for three patrol vehicles a year. Because if one of those vehicles hits the hundred and twenty thousand, I mean, they've got young guns over here that put thirty, thirty-five thousand miles a year on, and we got the older, more experienced ones that are only putting twenty thousand miles a year on. If we budget for three every year, it's real easy to budget for, so we're not do, playing this one, two, three, four game. And they'll always have at least two that need to go away with that hundred and twenty thousand miles. And we pick the next highest one up, or the next highest one that's costing starting to have transmission issues, or we're putting, having to put a new front end in it. It goes away, and then some of them, if we can get a hundred thousand mile one, even if they don't have all three of them at a hundred and twenty thousand, one comes in at ninety. Pick it, get rid of it, all roll it into motor pool fleet.
Sure.
But this, two this year, three this year, oh, we only need one this year, it's not working.
No, it's not. So, and one of those three should be out of Cascade funds.
Right.
So we're paying for two at a motor pool, and one out of Cascade.
Are you sure?
Capital equipment. No, that's what we should be doing. So, that's what we need to be doing.
Well, and the other issue is the, what do you call it, when you.
Well, it's the upfitting.
The upfitting is like, that one's huge.
I mean, if you buy three, that's another twenty thousand dollars the sheriff's office has to come up with.
That's per each one.
Per each one.
Yeah.
So if we get three, they're sixty thousand. And there's, there's only budgeted forty. So we've got a, this sheriff vehicle buying thing, we've talked about, you know, giving it all to the sheriff's office, you, you deal with it. You order the vehicles, you license them, you make sure they're on our asset list, you auction them off.
Yeah, why are you doing it?
Because I always have.
Well, because, some of those, and refit them for our own departments, mainly. That's where a lot of these older.
They can still do that.
They can do the work and order them and.
Right. I mean, once in a while, I'll forget to order four fobs. I get in trouble for that because then they gotta turn around and spend six hundred dollars out of the motor pool repair line item to go have two more fobs made.
Yeah, those things aren't cheap.
They're not cheap.
Oh, they're.
About three hundred bucks a piece.
Does that make sense to you that?
Yeah.
Or. But there are some years, you know, that were, I guess, in, in my defense, I'm like, don't, you don't have any money, don't buy any vehicles, right? Put a hold on any type of vehicle purchase.
Then the following year, we need eight.
Correct, so.
What do those cost a year? I mean, a, a fifty thousand dollars for a vehicle?
They're about forty.
About forty?
Forty, and then another twenty thousand outfit.
Right.
Significant amount, right?
Sixty thousand dollars per vehicle.
Okay.
Um, in my thinking, I've been doing this long enough now, I think, that we need a set number. And go in Doug's defense.
Then you have a fix.
All of a sudden, we come to a year that they don't have any that are a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand miles. We still order three and pick the top three out of their high mileage ones because if they're at a hundred thousand, by the time we order them in April, it's six months before we get them. All of a sudden, they've got three vehicles over a hundred and twenty thousand miles.
Yep, that is an accurate statement. Based on what we're seeing in our, our supply, and what's available to us, we can't be operating the way that we had been.
Right.
Right. So Commissioner Mopkin, you are absolutely on point where, yes, we should in fact start budgeting for three vehicles a year, either have two you paid for out of the general fund motor pool, and then the capital equipment fund, um, for the vehicle and for the build-out each year. So two out of the motor pool fund, and then one out of the capital, uh, equipment fund. That, that, that does make sense.
Yep.
But I think because we've gone, moved from half ton or three-quarter ton pickups to Durangos, that gives us more opportunity. Take those older vehicles and use them in these other departments. Before, they didn't want a pickup.
Right.
Didn't work, now the Durangos are working a lot better, so we're gonna get some more life out of those.
Get them, they'll probably be worth more money when they auction them off than a pickup, well, I don't know.
Yeah, at least you have fixed them out, you can look at every year, so.
Last pickup I sold ended up in, uh, Nebraska.
So who needs to talk to the sheriff's department to let them know that you're gonna be changing the policy?
I, I will, as soon as we leave here, I'll go over there and think we're gonna, we're gonna do three a year. Doesn't matter, we're gonna do three a year.
Doug will know where to finance them out of, but yeah.
And the one from the Cascade capital equipment thing, I, I don't know nothing about that money, but if that's what you guys decide, I need somebody to come to me.
It just doesn't matter to you, you've got three a year.
We got three.
Doug will finance it.
It's so much easier to.
Consistency is always.
Yeah, and that way I can, you know, get Kathy in the loop down here, have her do her deal, her pricing on it, I'll check with the Mountain Home Auto Ranch and.
Everybody used to show.
And whoever, and we'll, we'll go with the lowest price.
Yep, that's the best way to do it.
So knowing that, you know, you've spent a hundred and seventy-five so far this year, sounds like, um, you have anything else out of that budget, so it's two hundred, you want it twenty thousand. Is that going to allow three vehicles for the sheriff's department? Oh, no, wait. Yeah. So it'd not be two vehicles out of that one, correct, Doug?
Yes.
And then one for, like you were saying, a three-quarter ton pickup for the road department.
And we're talking motor pool, are we also on motor pool?
Yeah.
Okay, so we bought the don't we have anything out of that? We bought the van, the jail van.
Yeah, this fiscal year, we have four vehicles.
Spent a hundred and seventy-five.
Oh, okay, so, so we're done.
This fiscal year, yes.
We're done for fiscal year twenty-four.
Absolutely.
So you went up twenty though, so you got two hundred in there. You got eighty for the sheriff's vehicles, so gives you a hundred and twenty, what's that, a hundred and twenty?
What are you looking at?
Are you seeing where you're going?
You got two hundred thousand on your budget.
Uh-huh.
We know that you've got eighty thousand committed for sheriff vehicles.
Creation, this is, these are the ones that are gonna be through the CIP.
You told me we needed a hundred and twenty.
For twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay, okay, I'm confused, yes. Yes, three-quarter ton pickup for buildings and grounds for Scott's crew. That, that's with a service bed, uh, with a Tommy lift hydraulic gate on the back. That's gonna run about eighty thousand. And then if I can pick up another used SUV for about forty thousand-ish for probation.
Okay, good.
Yes, sorry, I was, I was on the wrong fiscal year.
And these will be coming to the commissioners via the capital improvement committee?
And that, yeah, yep.
Hey, anything else?
Um, we'll be back for weeds and pests next time, I guess. We're, we're gonna set up a meeting with Doug and Gabby and get Steve in here with, it, it's pretty simple. Um, so just, so you know, we, we just spent, I think it's this, this go-around, or maybe it was last one, you guys paid a claim for a new vendor for a UTV for the weed department. We budgeted for it last year, it went through CIP, we just got it delivered last week. It's a Mahandra Roxor. Looks just like my forty-eight Williams Jeep I drove. It only does forty, forty miles an hour, forty-five, a little four-cylinder diesel in it, four-speed transmission, four-wheel drive. It's got a three-quarter ton suspension under it, so we can haul that weight, and that's been our biggest fight trying to find those Kubotas. Within a year, I bet we put a thousand dollars in each one of them, replacing bushings and tires and.
Can't pack that much weight, they're not designed to.
And this one here is designed, it looks so much like a Jeep, it's not even funny.
I've heard of a Mahandra.
Yes.
The Mahandra's been making tractors for a hundred years.
Yep.
Yeah, Steve, if he has ever gone to any of the IAC conferences, I might behoove him to join the Idaho Association of Counties, the Weed Supervisors. And go to a conference.
He does.
Commissioner Mopkin, he, he does.
Yeah, I think he just, he just went to Salmon.
I'm pretty sure that he.
Said he's never been to a conference, and that we weren't part of IAC, so that was his response to me.
He just went to one in Salmon Conference, I don't know what it was.
Weed supervisors.
Yeah.
Weed supervisors.
So he's been at IAC and given different reports on weeds.
Oh.
Too, I've seen him.
Yeah, cuz he was the, he was the president there for a year or two on that.
That's weird.
I don't know if it was IAC, but it was definitely.
I've never attended an IAC conference. I was invited to join, but never have.
Cool.
I've seen demonstrations, so I don't know.
I wonder what he's, he's part of, he's part of something that's statewide.
I talked to him about it, just ask him if it's part of his budget, I just think it would be good for him, but.
Alright, well, thanks you guys.
Okay.
And we will look forward to seeing you on the weeds and all that other stuff coming.
Um, just something real quick on the A budget. Talked to Mike the other day. We have, I'm, I'm gonna let him explain it. Heck, one or two. See if we can get a little extra money in the budget, so these guys mid, mid-season, if they graduate to lead operator, senior operator, we'll have enough money in the budget to up and up where they need to be. This thing's been huge, the, the crew's attitudes changed because.
Well, we've been doing that, Jeff. We wait until next fiscal year.
Wait until next fiscal year.
And that was a policy thing that we talked about with Gordon this arm.
Right, so.
Here's a good one.
We talked to Mike, I'm sure Mike will talk about it, and we're talking about one of the weed department guys right now is part-time. Trying to get a CDL.
Well, good.
Um, we'll have another part-time employee.
We should have some leeway in there to be able to, if they graduate up or whatever.
We, we need to have, and I, I don't know where Mike found the money here a month or so ago for my three or four guys that.
Your unfunded positions that have been out there for the last year.
So what now the sheriff's office does is they give me an estimate, like next year I anticipate these five guys will go to the, I think, the outside. I just need to know who you anticipate next year.
Yep, yeah, this will be for next year.
See, and that was the issue in the past, was that guys would do that midstream, but we didn't budget for that, so we had to wait until next year and budget for that increase in salary, that's.
That's what I was telling my guy.
And that's how the sheriff's.
One, and then all of a sudden, Mike, Mike and Doug came up with some money somewhere.
Well, if you don't fill your.
It's out of his salary. It comes out of his salary, so it might.
If you have empty positions, we've already budgeted for those positions, so that's within your salary budget.
Okay.
So if you have, you know, if you have open positions, right now you're full though. So, you know, we always count on them being full, but that's probably where the money came from, is when
Well, we haven't had a fourth mechanic for a couple of times, I think that's probably what's going on. It's been huge to the attitude of the road techs, knowing that they can actually, there's steps that they can.
Absolutely.
More leadership. It actually, it's been good.
It is good.
Yeah, we just need to figure out and kind of know, hey, I might have two or three guys, or we can go from one to two. Mid-year, we need to know that for budget, so we can.
We talked to Mike yesterday, so he's got an idea of.
We also talked CDLs, we talked about.
Well, thank you very much.
For the guys to get their CDLs. And helping with that.
Something else, like, hopefully Mike remembers to talk about is right now, the Department of Labor is out of money. They don't have any power over one. They only pay eighty-six thousand. I would be more than willing to help make up that under six or six hundred dollars or whatever.
Press registration if available, which will be. Good, thanks man, I really appreciate that.
You can't quite within a year.
Make sure that's in your budget. Make sure it's in your budget to do that, I think that's a great idea. Might also, so Department of Labor's out of money, is that the Workforce Development Council?
Yeah, they're out of money, but they're gonna have more money in August first.
Okay.
And that's what their website even says, they say, don't apply now, but come August first, apply. So I've talked to the kid, told him, um, start looking at the different CDL schools down in the valley that are participating with the Idaho Launch Program. And be ready to go come August one, make the application. You'll be granted the, you'll get the voucher by August fifth, you'll be in that school by August tenth.
Perfect.
With the out by September, plow in snow in October.
I'd love to see us help the kids, you know, get their CDLs if need be, so just make sure there's a budget line item for it.
I've got another guy that just moved in at the Indian Academy Lane, that works as the manager of Camp at Daystar. That he's looking seriously at getting a CDL, and he's thinking about, some of the work for the county too, he's kind of, just the last few days.
That Idaho Launch Program, the last one I worked there, they were paying eighty percent of the bill, and that's five thousand to get a CDL. And be able to go and say, well, you're not gonna pay five grand, you're gonna pay five hundred. This is the difference for a lot of those guys.
I got three men that are on the Idaho Launch Program, that has kind of this, so.
Yeah, they'll run them through electric.
That's really cool.
In fact.
As electricians?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Eight thousand dollars.
That's exactly right.
Okay, thanks guys.
Stick around here.
Oh boy, now comes the fun conversation.
We're gonna move on to the A budget.
No kidding. Guys, I wanna take a break? Have a big mashed potato dinner, something like that, get sleepy?
That would be sweet, man. I could shake it, be nice.
Right.
He's supposed to bring his coffee and Baileys.
You're not buying lunch today?
Coffee and Baileys, did I hear?
Hey, now we're, now we're getting there.
How about just the Baileys you need to go?
Anyway, so I am here to present, um, my recommendation for pay raises for the county staff come October twenty-twenty-four. I have been, obviously, I've been here a year now, I've been talking to the folks here, watching what's going on out the economy everywhere in the country, but also our local economy here in the county. Uh, people are hurting everywhere, um, and no less so here, especially with the very high cost of living in terms of rent and groceries and gas, I mean, heck, it's forty, fifty cents a gallon more for gas here than it is down in the valley. One of the things that I have universally heard around the county, I've heard it from the three of you, I've of course seen it, is the wages that we're paying our people at the very bottom of the pay scale. And then the question comes, if we wanted to address those folks, how do we do that? How do we address, first of all, pay raises for everybody here in the county? And then how do we come up with some sort of a system that addresses those that are making at the bottom? Maybe additionally, without breaking the bank. Obviously, we have a budget we have to live within. When it comes to compensation, there are a few different ways that you can do it. Uh, there are pros and cons to however you do it. The most traditional way that you give pay raises is you give everybody an across-the-board percentage. You figure out what you can afford, and then you say, okay, we're gonna afford a three percent raise, or a four percent raise, or whatever. And that works when, from a ten-thousand-foot level looking down, that's very equitable, everybody gets the same percentage. However, when you look at it, when you get down to the nitty-gritty, and you start looking. However, when you look at it, when you get down to the nitty gritty and you start looking at it, when you're giving an across the board percentage raise, I wanna try to, and I'm a visual person. And I'm gonna give you guys an analogy. I know you're all gonna recognize the tool I'm talking about as the analogy, but I want you to bear with me. Imagine a slinky. Remember those nice little things? I want you to imagine a slinky laying on a table in front of you on its side. You've got that thing stretched out about halfway. This represents everybody in your organization from the highest paid to the lowest paid. Every ring represents an individual. The gap between those rings represents the dollars per hour between each individual. This is where you are today. When you give a percentage raise across the board, you're taking the head of that slinky and you're pulling it forward. There's gonna become bigger gaps between these earlier rings, but by the time you get down to that bottom, there's not a lot of stuff going on down there. In fact, until you pull that slinky, the bottom really doesn't even move. That's what you get when you have an across the board percentage raise. There's another way that you can give raises. And this is when you basically say, look, we don't have a lot of money, but we can only really address the people at the bottom of the range. Now, I want you to take that same slinky and I want you to go to the other end and start pushing it forward. These people at the top won't see anything happen. The people at the bottom will move a little bit and then they start slamming into those other people just above them. You have a problem there. That's called compression and compression does not do anything very positive for morale. So what's another option that you can do here? And this is kind of where I came up with, well, let's just call it a radical approach to a recommended pay raise. And that's where we start again with a fixed increase, a fixed percentage increase for those people at the top of the scale. And so again, using the slinky analogy, you start pulling that slinky forward. Those people at the top do get a whatever percentage raise this body decides they can afford. We never wanna neglect the people at the top. They've worked hard. They've gotten there. They're valuable. We wanna recognize their value. But then, when you get to about the halfway point, I'm recommending you basically pick up the slinky and move it forward. In other words, we give a four percent across the board raise. In my model that I've come up with here, you do that until you reach thirty dollars an hour. At that point, instead of giving a fixed percentage raise, we effectively give a fixed dollar per hour amount to those people all the way down to the bottom of the scale. It means that we can basically move the people at the very bottom a maximum amount forward that we can afford without decreasing the distance between them and their peers immediately above them. And so you can move the bottom people forward the most without compressing the pay of all the people within the county. So it recognizes everybody getting a minimum of, in this model that I came up with, everybody gets a minimum of a four percent raise. Those people making thirty dollars an hour and less receive a fixed dollar amount per hour, which translates, translates to those people at the bottom end of the scale effectively receiving a greater percentage increase, but the dollar per hour increase is essentially the same. This way, we're able, again, like I said, able to move the people at the bottom end of the pay scale up. We're able to increase our starting pay rates for those positions at the bottom most without neglecting anybody within the county. I used four percent, went to the Consumer Price Index, took a look at that, figured, I know that Valley County's cost of living is higher. I know we've been hurting up here more than most of Idaho. And so where the Consumer Price Index right now is at three and a half percent, I'm recommending four. I also recognize we may not be able to afford that. Totally understand that, or maybe you'll surprise me and say we can afford more than that. This model that I came up with basically says, you determine how much money we have to play with and then I develop or make a recommendation for a plan that fits in with this model so that we come in on budget.
Mike, those numbers that are clear on the right hand, that's the actual percentage that salary will increase.
Correct. That's the effective increase that they would receive, but if you look at the actual amounts, which are actually, I'm sorry. That's a just a chart that I used over here on the far right. This is a matrix that I used to basically decide where the people would fall in at. If you move over here, Gabby, if you could move a little bit to the left. In the green, this is the actual percentages that everybody would get. This is the actual dollar per hour that would translate.
Gabby, could you go to the bottom? Yeah, please. Oh, there's a two. If I can see that. Over a two dollar an hour.
Those people making over thirty dollars an hour will still receive a four percent raise.
Top of the two twelve. Clear share. So I guess the ultimate question is, okay, what's the bottom line figure compared to last year's budget?
Yeah, so Mike, on this, when you're adjusting those, the ranges. So the county's always been built upon pay ranges. I mean, for their, for the title that they hold.
Yes.
So this is bringing all of the new employees off the bottom of that pay range. Have you done any work to look and see where that puts them as far as years of service, bottom of the pay scale? Effectively, we are bringing up the bottom of our entry level positions, which will affect all of those pay positions. So does it, how does it affect their mid range and, you know, the top scale of that?
So again, when we look at the model that I came up with here, we look at the people who are at the very bottom. They're gonna be typically your newest employees. Maybe entry level employees, not a lot of experience, maybe no relevant experience to the job they're in now. The concern, I believe you're asking about is what about those people that have been here for four or five years? Are we going to see, you know, what about them as far as equity versus the brand new employees? Again, this model says the dollar per hour amount that we're offering the people at the very bottom basically represents the minimum increase. And that's, so everybody above, people with five years of experience, would see the same amount of an increase that people at the very, our newest employees would make. So I don't see any areas, and I've gone through this. I didn't see overall any areas where people who have been here a five years or so were being shorted relative to the newer employees coming on board today. I say that, however, if you look on this chart, and this would be where you look at the very far right column there, the ones in red, you're gonna see some individual adjustments that go on there. These are gonna be situations where, for whatever reason, I felt an individual in a specific job due to historical inequities or oversight or whatever, or their job duties changed. We've had people that have received promotions who didn't probably receive the pay raise that they probably should have received when they got that. That's where you're gonna see situations where I'm trying to address those inequities based, typically based on years of service. A good example, we have in one department here at the county, we have two ladies working for us who are making significantly below twenty dollars an hour, who have been here over five years. In my opinion, that's something that needed to be adjusted and addressed. And so this original model of, okay, we're gonna try to give a pay raise, didn't get them high enough to get them to where I felt they needed to fit in relative to their peers based on the level of the job that they're doing and based upon their years of service. In those cases, they were, they received a recommendation for an individual adjustment to get them into a band that's more reflective to where they should be.
Let me ask it a little bit different way. So I am, I just started with the county. My pay is gonna be increased and I am a road tech one. Neil is a road tech one still also, hasn't passed his classes, but he's been here for two years. So my pay is gonna get an eight percent adjustment. His pay will only get a four percent adjustment.
To use, yes, and in that, if, to use your analogy, if Neil was making thirty dollars an hour or more, he would get a four percent raise. If you were making entry level sixteen dollars an hour, you would get an eight percent raise. Or the dollar per hour amount that both of you would get would be virtually the same and therefore the distance between you as far as dollars per hour would not change. Yes, from a technic, from a, you know, if you look at the math, yes, the percentage difference would be higher for you, but the dollar per hour difference would be the same. And that's what I built into this was an idea that, okay, we're not gonna change the dollar per hour difference between any two people, but it would translate to a higher percentage for those who make less. I'm gonna give you another way to think about this.
Really, we're just increasing the the minimums for that, for that type of.
And that's a perfect term to use. Think of it as a minimum dollar per hour increase for those people making below thirty dollars an hour.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was, when I came to you, it's like, how do we do this? And I think you've, I mean, I like your matrix. I like the way you've you've attacked this. And my question would be, how's this work going forward year by year down the road? Would you be using this, is this a one time thing or is this something you'd be working into the process every year?
If the point was to move our entry level, or if it was to move the salary structure, the basic entry level pay rates of county employees, those at the bottom, without, again, compressing them up against people who make higher than that. Yes, this would be something that we could try year after year. There's gonna be a point in time, hopefully, when we can go and say, I believe Valley County employees are making a wage that is affordable and matching up with the market that we have up here.
Yeah.
To give you another mathematical explanation of what I'm trying to do here. Imagine two people making, you have two people working here. You have one of them making thirty dollars an hour. You have another one making twenty dollars an hour. If you give each of those people, so there's ten dollars an hour difference between the two of them. You give them each a four percent raise. At the end of that raise, there's no longer a ten dollar an hour difference in their pay. There's now a ten dollar and forty cent an hour difference in pay. My recommendation is you say, we're just going to move both of those two up by the same dollar an hour amount as possible. We maintain that same gap, but the person at the bottom technically received a greater percent increase, but the amount of the increase remains the same.
I'm following you. Mike, what about folks that are salaried none in elected positions? They're just gonna get a standard?
Standard four.
Four percent.
Yeah, and that's what I said here. Anybody at thirty dollars an hour above gets a standard four.
Or three or whatever.
Or whatever the number is you come up with, absolutely. Because again, I don't want to neglect the folks we have who are making at that end of the scale. They have, like I've said, they've worked hard. They've earned their way there and we don't wanna see them leave. But we also have to try to make the county as appealable to applicants, future applicants, young people as possible. And it's, it's hard. I'm finding people. But one thing, I mean, we've all taken economics. We all know it. And if we're paying below average for our entry level people, all things being equal, when you pay less than average, you're going to get less than average.
Tom, Mike, another thing that you gotta keep in mind here, and I bring it up every time we have these discussions is we're also in paying for the increase in the medical insurance. And I think that's important. Usually it's around two or three percent.
Yes.
I don't know what it is this year. I haven't seen those figures yet, but that's a raise.
It is a raise. And then unfortunately for a number of people, there's also an out of pocket increase that they see. And when it comes to health insurance, remember, we don't charge health insurance rates for people based on a percentage of their income. We pay, we charge a fixed amount. Their out of pocket amount to pay for dependent children, spouses, whoever it might be, is a six dollar amount and that hits the people at the bottom of the pay scale harder than it does the people at the top.
People with lots of kids, lots of dependents.
Absolutely.
Don't hit three the same as a single person.
Right.
But even, you know, bottom line, I mean, you hire somebody and they're starting at low wage. I mean, they're not looking at health insurance. They're not looking at all those things. They're looking at, how am I gonna pay my gas bill, my rent, my groceries, my fuel in my car? That's what they're looking at, that dollar amount.
And that's something that I have definitely been hearing out in the economy. This is not just local. This is a national thing. In strange little areas, we're seeing people making choices for financial reasons that they never had to make before. A great example is talk to people that do windshield repair on automobiles and ask them, what's your business looking like these days? And they're saying, we're not getting the business that we used to. What, are rocks not hitting windows anymore? Of course they are. But people are deciding, I can live with three or four crisscross marks in front of my vision because I gotta pay for groceries this month.
Sure.
Things like that. Windshields aren't really going up in price, but people are making those kind of choices because we're not being told the truth on what the economy is really like at the national level. It's worse than I think people think it is. And again, so whatever we can do for those people at the bottom without neglecting those people at the top is what I'm recommending.
The concern is, is, you know, county budgets are capped at three percent plus new construction. And so everything that we've heard today, there's no way that we are gonna be able to afford this amount of money.
Let me start bottom line.
Is that the six hundred thousand?
Well, that's.
So that's just, that's just salary. You'll have to tack on a benefit cost on top of that amount, but it's the five fourteen.
Thirty percent in there, Gabby. So it's like six hundred and sixty-four thousand.
And this, like I said, I am fully expected to this, whatever the amount is that you tell me we can work with, will change accordingly.
Gabby, does this include all the sheriffs also?
That includes the sheriff issue where we gotta figure out what we're doing. We were here earlier when we talked about.
I was not. And this includes everybody but elected officials.
No, this includes elected.
Oh, does it have it on there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I'm with you now.
So three percent of our budget last year, what does that allow us as far as funding? It's three percent of our last year's budget. The last year's budget number.
I guess I'm not understanding your question. Three percent of what we levied? Because it's, it's not over the overall budget. It's what we can levy, right? Correct.
Go higher than three percent.
Got it.
And then we also have new construction.
Levy to the tax bill.
So bottom line question is, is how much money do we have to spend on salary increases versus, you know, we talked today about computer software, about other things that people need. So it's, until we get a full picture, we can't.
Exactly, exactly. And I've also got at least one new person request from one department. And that's right out of the bottom line as well.
So at the beginning, more salaries at a high dollar.
It'd be a entry to mid.
Okay.
It's planning and zoning. We take back that impact area. She's gonna need more help.
Right, and I think there is a form for new hires. Cause now, last time I looked was blank that Gabby sent us. So there's gonna be one new person in there. You know, the other thing to think about is that some of the software programs, instead of paying them with general fund dollars, can we pay them with another source of funding like Peltor SRS or Title III or, and take that out of general fund budget, which allows you more, more. I'm concerned about it, you know, this.
I don't think we have.
Civil software, a hundred and thousand dollars, that's a big hit.
We also have a Percy increase coming in July.
But is that percentage going up to?
Depends on whether it's a general employee or a. Depends on whether it's a general employee or a law enforcement. General employees, and this is just the employee portion, we're going from six point seven one percent to seven point one three percent. So that's basically another half a percent increase for general employees. And the corresponding increase for the employer, which would be greater than a half a percent, I'm sure there. Law enforcement, unfortunately, is going from nine point eight three to ten point eight three with another accompanying increase for the employers. Again, I know it's easy to tell somebody, hey, every dollar you put into Percy, you're going to get back. But you can't buy groceries with what you're putting into your Percy account. You will eventually, but you can't do it today.
Is that an election?
That's a mandatory. That is, and that is established by the Percy.
And you guys have already figured that, Gabby?
Okay, great.
And so what are we doing with the medical expenses? I mean, it's just a percentage basis that we we're doing now, correct?
I believe.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the response.
Yeah, I didn't hear that either, Gabby.
I did an analysis in what budget that we were last year.
Increased it eight percent?
Yes.
So as we are paying for that increase as far as the county budget, are the employees, what are the employees paying?
I mean, their share goes a pay percent.
So Doug, have you figured cash carryover and all that? Unfill positions, all that kind of stuff?
Like, we still have a lot of.
Other departments.
Other departments to go through. Yeah, so I mean, this is great. This is a great presentation. I don't know that we're going to be able to do this. And so, you know, this is a whist list right now.
It's an aggressive request.
But it's, I mean, it's very, it's a very good. It's working. Thank you.
And that's. And it's tailored to whatever it works. It's tailorable to whatever the dollar amount is.
Or it is.
Yep.
Sure appreciate that, Mike. Thank sixteen thousand. All right, great presentation.
Thank you.
Don't know where it goes.
I have the easy part. I can make a request for anything I want.
This is the hot seat. You really should run for this job.
Absolutely not. Thank you.
Okay, so where do you guys want to go next? Or do you want to call a quit for the day?
That's your call.
I've got until twelve thirty. I don't know what your timing is, so.
I can go to twelve thirty or you quit now.
Continue to go, I think.
Let's try and get as much as we can. If if we don't have BOE, if BOE is not as many days, we might be able to capture one of those days back too.
And I talked to a commissioner this morning, and I think she said somewhere around three to six BOEs. That's going to take one morning to do.
That's all the applications.
So far, yeah, so it's not going to be a big BOE issue this year, it looks like. But they still have time. I think it's still Thursday or Friday to get them in this week. So we should know by the end of this week how many BOEs we're going to have. We can do some more budget work during those days after BOE. Do we have to advertise that?
Board of Equalization hearings?
And budget hearing afterwards.
We would still have to, yeah, we would.
Whatever you guys want to do, we can quit now or we can keep going.
Say that, we keep going for thirty minutes at least.
So you want to go, we're talking A budget?
Yeah, no, no, we're just talking the clerk's budget. We'll just do oh one or one hundred.
Just the B budget.
So Doug, you've only got forty-five hundred in there for travel. Are you going to do NACO? And the other IAC or is that enough?
Ah, it's not enough. I don't anticipate this. I did not budget for NACO for next fiscal year. You had indicated that you are planning on going and I.
Neil's going, I know. I'm going to go. Johanna's going to go.
I think that's probably good representation.
Okay.
So then the only other one is the passport.
Yeah, we we felt that we needed to create a supply expense line specifically for passports because we've been taking that out of our supplies office budget. And you can see we're continuing to go over each year. Well, that is because of the passport supplies that we have to buy. So we've decided to create just a specific expense line for passports.
And then I guess the next one would be travel expenses. Jump that two grand.
Where are you looking?
Oh, you're looking at.
So we're, yeah, now we're.
No, yeah, I'm sorry. I meant commissioners.
Yeah.
And that's probably for your NACO stuff right there.
Yep.
Everything else is the same.
So because I don't I don't have any idea if Catlin will plan on, oh, she won't do NACO. It'll be way too soon into her term to do that. So that would be an issue. I would assume she'll do all the conferences. Neil will do the conferences. I'll do the conferences. We were at fourteen nine last year. I don't know. That's a hard one, but my my expectation would be that Catlin will go to conferences. I'll go to conferences. Don't go to conferences.
Well, even though IAC, IAC comes out of there too, doesn't it?
Correct.
So that's for hotels and all that other stuff.
Yeah.
I wonder if we don't take that to sixteen. You haven't done some of the conferences, and I'm assuming Catlin will.
Well, there's a lot of them, like the Spring Institute conferences that I've had them for five years in a row. And it's like, I don't need to go to these anymore because I think I got it. There's some.
That's a legislative one though, too, that they go over all the new legislation.
And then you would go to that whenever you're in February for that. Hey, where you want to go next?
Where we have.
Um, so I just want to make sure the commissioners are fully aware that next year we will not be having to fund public defense. State is taking that over. Unfortunately, though, there are still some expenses. So this bu- this budget's going to go away. The public defender budget is going to be removed from the county's budget. However, what I was indicating though is there are some things that the county is still going to be responsible for when an individual is indigent and needs an attorney. That's for child protection cases. Uh, it it's for guardian cases. So there are still some times that the county is going to have to pay for indigent defense or indigent for an individual who's determined indigent that can't afford an attorney when they are, they do have the opportunity to have one.
So Doug, wouldn't that be under the indigent?
Well, we we have a couple of options. I feel that if we just budget for that in the court budget uh, in one oh six, that would satisfy, because you do have the authority to levy for those type of expenses in the court. So I think that.
We need to do that.
That's what I think we need to do.
Agreed. So what do you think?
Ten thousand. Some counties are doing between fifty and ten thousand. I feel that we should go on the low end and do ten thousand. That's not reflected on here, but just to to share that with you. It will, yeah. So the next one, we're going to, we'd like to talk with the commissioners about is economic development. Are we still going after that large WiFi grant, that one that was thirteen million? Or can we remove that from next year's budget?
I would remove that. So where we're going right now is there is, we have fifty-eight thousand dollars that we will receive. So put fifty-eight on that line item, and that is a planning grant. And the direction we're going right now is working with private entities to capitalize.
This is broadband?
Broadband. That was the B grant we went through.
Thirteen million, huge grant.
Yeah, we were right there to get it. Put fifty-eight million, or fifty-eight thousand on that line item.
Is there any other economic development grants that we can think of for next fiscal year?
Yes, we've got the CDBG grant that we are trying to get to improve the senior center. I just reached out. They have not allocated that one yet, but you can write two hundred and fifty a year. So the two hundred and fifty that we were going to do for that would pay for the first set of upgrades. The second set of upgrades we could write for next year. So we need the two hundred and fifty plus, we're going to write a fifty thousand dollar gym grant for the fairgrounds, which reminds me, I got to get that done.
Okay, so from what I'm hearing, you say Commissioner Moplin, we need to budget for at least three hundred and fifty-eight thousand?
Yes.
And is all of that going to be reimbursed?
Yes, those are all grants.
Economic development part in that line?
That's all the grants and contributions, the top line. That's what I am familiar with right now. How to get that gym back. Doug, did they ever ask for the other five thousand on the ED Pro this year?
Ah, yes.
So.
Doug, I'm sorry, but I I forgot about this. Under public defense, where are you going to budget for community guardians? Because they asked for, what was it, fifteen hundred?
Yeah, we budgeted for that in in indigent.
Indigent, okay.
Yeah. We have a specific line for that.
Thirty out there for this year's economic development?
Yeah.
Have we been approached at all?
Tell you everything that has.
So we might have seventy-five.
Did sell you five. We've already given out forty-five of that. We have thirty left there. And I know the dog sled had come in and asked for some money.
So you gave thirty-five thousand to.
Is that the thirty-five we was talking about?
Thirty-five thousand was for the West Central Economic Development Council. And then ten thousand was for the dog sled challenge?
That's the forty-five, and then the thirty thousand is an in and out for the economic, the commerce.
That's the ed program, correct. You guys did budget an additional thirty thousand in the overall economic development for anyone else that for economic development. I'm just trying to think of who it was specifically. For the the cost of the the summit was paid out of there one year.
Can we just leave that one alone? I think that there could be some things out of extension that could be paid for. Add that one too.
If we have anything for the fairgrounds, that was a grant.
That's the fifty thousand gym grant. But we did not write that one because the EDC was writing the thirty-five. We only have one per county. So, but we will write that one this year for the fairgrounds.
So would that be in the seventy-five thousand next, next year?
Yeah, that's what I just asked them to put in instead of the thirteen million, it'd be three hundred and fifty.
Okay, you're putting it up there. Okay. So you want to move on down to elections?
So Doug, hold on one second. The ED Pro grant line with commerce can only be thirty. Thirty is as high as they will go. That thirty-five needs to go to thirty.
Okay.
And then the overall economic development, that's where the thirty-five is for Lindsay's position.
Thank you for that clarification.
And elections are pretty much the same.
Yeah, elections typically is always the same.
Perfect.
Uh, let's go to general fund now. This is kind of the big one for the commissioners to take a real close look at. Um, we are increasing or proposing to increase telephone other from a hundred and twenty thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, that includes not only telephone costs, but also the WiFi and internet services.
Is that for the title company?
That's for all, this is for this location and their, and that other location.
That's just us, that's just usages, that's what it is.
So Doug, you feel like, because there's only fifty-two thousand out of there right now, why the thirty thousand club? Do you know something that is going to be a difference in contract or?
You just kind of guesstimated what more it would be.
We've been trying to project, yeah, we did.
For merit title.
But we're still going to have the same number of extensions. I just moved from here to there. I guess the plan will be to just shut off the heat in the rooms that we're not utilizing.
Over there, here.
Here.
Well, you can't, you can't, you shut them down too far, you're going to freeze stuff up.
Did we add any up there of like four?
Yeah, Mara has a, well, everybody's on cell phones, but most of them don't. I don't know that everybody has a.
That landline.
Death phone, so.
I told him the other day, just fax that to me. I already have a landline. I'll scan it to you.
Exactly.
That's outdated now.
Still have a landline box on my house, but I don't have a landline number anymore.
We get our internet through our landline in my house, out of Anthony's family. And we had to put in two lines to get thirteen minutes. Oh my goodness. Otherwise, nothing would load.
Gabby reminded me, I think we were coding some things inaccurately, and we needed to make an adjustment to make sure that all of the costs for fiber for phones were coming out of this expense line. So that's why we, in fact, increased it by thirty thousand as well as projecting cost for the new building. So that's why we increased it to thirty thousand.
But broadband might be there to do that. Once it comes through.
I mean, it might, but it won't be for you.
So Doug, moving on down to electricity, did you guys figure in the power bill for the title company?
We don't, we.
Well, let's see, they're paying for that, aren't they?
They are.
Until February.
Correct.
March, April, May, June, July, August, September. So there's another seven.
Accounted for that cost in the electricity bill, so we will have to make an adjustment there.
We need to find out what the power bill is and divide it by seven months, and that would be what the number would be. And if we put more people in, they're going to use more power.
Be more power, yeah.
Well, they're not going to be paying electricity bill for our.
Not past February.
Well, they shouldn't be paying it now because.
No, it's a triple lease. They they pay it.
Right, but we are now owning the bottom part of that building. They shouldn't be paying for our electricity on the bottom part of that building.
And that's, that's, we're talking about money, but we need to meet with those guys and sit down and kind of work some of these these issues out.
Yeah, I agree. That needs to be negotiated.
That's a great point, yep. And I'm assuming the water bill will be converting to ours after February for that building, so we need to look at that. But you raised that four grand. That's probably good.
A good thing on, or same thing on the power, we should probably pay an import on that now too for our.
Well, and then the other issue is if the county shops move out, or so it's going to be the end of next year, I think you could probably keep going through that, the budget next year. And then when they move out, that's got to convert over to general fund too. Um, what's going down? You cut, uh, Spark Creek, that's what they asked for. We gave them what they asked. And then Treasure Valley Transit, they asked for forty-three, right?
Right.
We dropped that twelve. And what else we got?
We did in fact.
Senior's got eleven. It pauses getting twenty-five. That's what ten for Shepherd Home. Um, opioid funds, if we, this new one that we just got noticed on, do we want to budget for this year? Do you want to wait and see how much that is for the next year?
I think with the chairman commissioners, we did budget eighty thousand for opioid settlement funds. Um, I I think that's probably a pretty good projection of what Valley County's going to receive each year.
So did anybody, um, has Long Valley Preservation come in to talk about that five thousand that we had budgeted for them?
Have not.
Try and see if I can reach out and see if they're going to need those funds.
Who's, who's that?
Historic, the old society and.
Roseberry.
And Roseberry, yeah. I didn't know we were. I didn't know we were doing...
They knew, okay, let's go to grant, GNA infrastructure.
Um, Shepherd's Home contribution, you heard anything?
They want ten thousand, yeah?
Okay. Well, they, it looks like they've already got ten thousand.
That was for, yeah, that was committed.
For October?
Uh, that's committed for this fiscal year, that's correct.
So do we, can we send them a check for ten this year?
We was, just recently received an invoice from...
Okay, perfect.
I did wanna share with the commissioners under... Can you go up? Uh, the dues memberships. Our dues for this fiscal year were paid last year, so you can see that we haven't expended anything this year. We're, we're, we did pay our dues, uh, we just paid them in advance.
Okay.
But, um...
Carry over that amount?
Correct.
Can you explain to me what the dues are for?
For IAC, IAC has different dues that are due to them, the Capital Defense Fund, um, there's the Public Litigation Fund. So there are funds, or there's dues that are due to IAC that they utilize, uh, to represent us.
Cause we're a member of...
Cause we're a member of the association.
Okay, and, and each district pays a fund too.
Correct.
And there's Natural Resource Litigation Fund, there's Capital Crimes Fund. I think all those are staying the same, they're not asking for any more, are they?
We just received the, uh, the notice from them, and they're basically staying the same.
Yeah, no natural resource, we said, no, we don't need to raise it. And we had that meeting last week.
Um, and then these are all the requests that came in, uh, from McPaws, Shepherd's Home, Youth Advisory Coalition, Rise Up To Thrive, Ignite Idaho. Commissioners, as you can see, we have budgeted for those.
Those are not...
Those are not opioid. Those are just a request to the county for a contribution.
You know, Doug, I guess what I'm, and I'm not promoting this, but should we be treating all three of those the same?
Not only that, but our seniors are only getting eleven. You know, I mean, it's, it's kinda like...
This is a political question.
Yeah, I think every year we need to set aside a certain amount of money to contribute to these types of entities. We make them come in and request, you know, like grant funds, give us exactly what they're gonna use those monies for. But...
Are you trying to make them all the same dollar amount?
Yeah.
Yep.
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
So the V Corp, they get theirs from the opioid, right?
V Corp actually wrote that grant, they were, they're getting it from Health of Walgreens, that Health and Welfare Grant.
Don't we throw opioid funds at them too?
The V Corp?
Yeah.
No, they just review our applications for those that are wanting money, but...
Which is the bottom three that we're looking at here.
Right.
You know, the issue is, um, bang for your buck, I guess is really what it comes down for me. It's so much easier to say, this is what we're committing to those kind of groups, and everybody gets the same amount. You start trying to go down the road, well, this one needs more because of this or that, and again yourself in trouble.
I would agree with that statement. I mean, our vets are getting seventy-eight hundred, our seniors are getting eleven. I think that we need to come up with something that says, call it amount for each one of these and, and do that.
I mean, I'm not trying to play devil's advocate, but it's, it's hard to advocate, it's hard to determine what, uh, different service that each one of these entities is providing to the community, right? I mean, they're, they are so much different, so I think it's hard to set the same amount, I guess, for, for each of them, um...
I, I follow what you're saying, the senior centers, they're both getting the same, and they provide the same service. But your Rise Up To Thrive, your Ignite Idaho, the Youth Advisory Council, um, those are all different.
And I'm not trying to say one's better than the others, right? That's, I, I just...
But they're different entities.
Ultimately, yes, and, and ultimately, it's the commissioners' decision, right, for, for sure.
You know, one year we had with McPaws, we felt like, you know what, we need, and they're home to line, which is really great to see, but that, that's twenty-five thousand. Maybe we need to, to raise the seniors to that same amount split or two. Maybe that should be twelve-five instead of eleven thousand. We felt like we should at least kinda treat the seniors the same amount as what we're doing for the dogs. Cats.
Don't forget the cats, man.
What?
The Cascade Seniors, they're back open now, there was...
Yeah, there was, they had a couple of their directors that really got crossways with each other, and they had a big crash, but I'm not, I'm not advocating that, you could also cut back McPaws to, say, twenty-two thousand, so about half of that goes to this, you know, that same amount goes to seniors, that was our thinking because it just, literally, it just didn't feel right to me.
Well, and...
Whatever you guys wanna do, this is your budget. The Paws.
It's difficult for me, because you keep saying, every single time we run something, it takes money out of hand for our employees.
Exactly.
And when we are six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in the hole right now, or something close to that, four-hundred thousand, I think, say, you know, these, it becomes more and more difficult to give to all these entities, because there's a hundred nonprofits in Valley County. And so, pretty soon, everybody's gonna be in here saying, I need money to run my nonprofits.
Yeah, exactly.
Every single one of them needed, I get that. The opioid money is where I've gone to, what opioid programming are you putting into place? And we use those opioid funds to pay these types of expenses, but just to start using taxpayer dollars to pay for nonprofits, I'm, I'm starting to really feel uncomfortable with that. If I wanna contribute to these entities, I will do so out of my pocket, with the money I have left over after I pay my taxes and everything else.
Well, I know one year we had a really hot discussion about Shepherd's Home, because we found out that they can't take our local kids. It has to be, you've department of health and welfare, they send kids, we don't have a say in that, so it's like, whoa, when are they really going for Valley County?
Yeah.
And it, but it does change. I remember when they very first started with, you know, Bill and Dottie, they were, I mean, kids from the high school.
We used to go there, and then...
Go there.
But they don't receive funding from Health and Welfare when they do that. Now they're reimbursing Health and Welfare for those kids that Health and Welfare sends up, so they'll take Valley County kids.
And I don't know that that's changed enough, they need to come in and give us a presentation on that.
Huh.
They'll be here next week. Okay, I think we leave this as it is right now, but the first area that we are gonna have to cut is this, because I do not want to take money out of our employees' pockets in order to support local nonprofits. And even though I think that they're totally critically necessary, I think that the community has to support them also. And we cannot be the only ones doing that.
What is animal damage control?
That's the wolf program, and it's what, fifty-five thousand?
We give it...
Fifty-five hundred, and that goes to the state, and they use that for animal depredation. Um, so if the rancher loses a cow out here, they're supposed to reimburse them for that value, but the way it works is they throw it all in one fund, they take the number of animals, they can prove were killed by, and everybody gets a percentage of whatever that figure is, so it's a subsidy for guys that have lost livestock.
Yeah, any of the ranchers, yeah, I'm following you.
No, the issue, the other issue that I wanna state for him, shut up here, is that if you add all those up, like Rise Up To Thrive and Yak and, it's not that much money. Maybe a hundred, a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars out of your whole seven-million-dollar budget. That's the thing that Gordon kept bringing up to me, is it's really not that much when you add together. However, in a year like this, if we're short, that's where you cut. And it's not like a permanent thing, you can always come back to it in a year where you might have some surplus.
I would really like to change the way that we do it. You know, we probably need to have that conversation moving forward, but I think that we need a pool of funds, and everybody comes in and asks for their grant requests, and whatever is in that pool of funds is what we have. Because we are going to start having more and more individual, uh, entities come in and say, you know, why aren't we supporting those feet? Why aren't we supporting the, you know, I mean, there's different entities throughout the county that always require funding, and I, I'm concerned that we are starting something with this, these asks, that are going to snowball. And if everybody knows that we have a hundred thousand dollars in order to support all these entities, it's a grant request, let us know exactly what it's for, and then...
We kinda did that, Sherry, remember, we kinda said, you're gonna have to run it to V Corp. For some of these soci- social programs.
That's only opioids.
Right.
That's not for here.
But we were, we shoved that off on that committee to make those decisions ready for us. Instead of us doing that, so it took the politics away from us.
Absolutely, on the opioid funds, I agree, you know, to make sure that, that they're doing what they need to do, but, I mean, we could have our social committee. Via an entity that looks at all of the grant requests, figures out what is most important in Valley County, and then allocate funds that way. Something along those lines, or, so I think we leave it here right now, but I think we need a big conversation about how we do this as we move forward, so we don't have more and more and more requests, the higher ask. These are taxpayer funds, and if a taxpayer wants to contribute, they should be doing it.
The, the lake, you know, the deal with the irrigators and all that, a lot of money, Ron Shirtlift, where does that money go in?
They're ARPA dollars.
ARPA?
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So, and we should agree to ARPA dollars.
Yeah.
I follow what you're saying, Sherry, I, I understand. And part of this, to me, would be Sheriff's Office and, and our, uh, the extent of the probation people, you know?
Oh, that'd be a great, yeah.
What's the most important, you know, thing that would help this county?
Yeah.
And let them have some input on that.
That's a great call.
But the code says we have to help with, you know, dogs and cats. And, okay, and my heart's like, well, I think it's a six-hundred-thousand-dollar budget, or maybe it's even more now. How much money do you really need to run McPaws? You could have twenty people working there, you could do the same thing with two. I don't know, but I always felt like, boy, that's a lot of money for the, what, four dogs that came from the county.
They raise, they raise a lot of money, well, they used to get money from the lot fund, I think, I don't know if they still do.
They probably still do.
That's the way City McCall pays for, for that, but they also have the thrift store, they also have the surgical center. They make money to support that.
They make...
So what is our, what is our contribution there?
So what is, what is the GNA infrastructure?
Neighborhood Authority, that's the grant we got for service to hire Famera and all that.
We didn't do it correct, Commissioner Thompson, what, what we needed to do. It was a little confusing, we were in a rush to get it funded, so what we have determined is we've broken it out to, what is the actual cost for, uh, for wildfire mitigation specialists for Mara? What's her salary cost, what's her benefit cost, and then what did she need in an actual budget for operations? We broke that down to about ninety-five thousand, uh, we have a new, um, do you have that budget, Kevin? If you can just go to it.
So then that one would come out of general fund?
We created a new expense line for it.
That's why it's zero.
Fire mitigation?
All right, where is it on today?
I don't think it's on.
It's not, because we did it with Mara.
Well, what I was gonna show you is we, we created a new expense line, or a new fund for that position, and then on the, uh, we were getting re, we still are getting reimbursed for that, it's just not four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand upfront like we thought it was. It's gonna be approximately ninety thousand a year. So what you're seeing o- on the screen is, yeah, that's, there's a reduction of four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. It's not really accurate, because there is a new fund that has been created for fire mitigation, and then a revenue line for the Good Neighbor Authority grant to fund that position, uh, and her, um, its general expenditures for five years, so this was the first year that it was created, and now we have four more years of the GNA grant.
So is that grant five hundred thousand each year?
So, i- it's, it's five hundred thousand for five years.
Awesome, so we're spreading out over five years.
Correct.
Uh, that only, that only funds her stuff.
Correct. I don't, right now it only funds her position and basically some supplies.
The challenge is gonna be after five years and this money goes away, you guys are gonna have to put this in your, in your budget.
Or hopefully we find some additional grants.
This is creating a whole new position, basically, in the future, when you're still on the board.
But if it's, if it's still self-sustainable, though, if that's position to be self-sustainable by doing all the GNA, it may pay for itself, she's almost gotta build it to that.
The, under hers, did we...
That's a discussion you guys are gonna have to have with her.
Yeah.
Somehow we gotta generate revenue off your program.
Could be self-sustainable to make it...
Otherwise, it's gonna be a full subsidy.
Yep.
Yeah, there'll be an admin line on some of those grants, but did we underneath her put those, the grant line items, so that she can go after those grants?
So no, what, what we've done is we put those in contracts fire mitigation, um...
That's the three-fifty.
That's three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, yeah.
Now, is the number she gave?
We haven't, yeah, that's what we've done in the past, we haven't broken it down, uh, specifically, but whatever we budget for there on the expense, we budget for on the tail end is revenue as well.
I would ask her, 'cause I know she was trying to do two grants this year, which is gonna be five hundred thousand.
And I thought she was gonna just drop it down to one, but I, I will...
She and I had a conversation, and I said, you know, you gotta figure out what you need, but, um, Stephanie did three grants last year. But they, they're over a four-year period, so... Yeah, and we don't have anything on those new positions, she'd asked for a position, and I, I just told her, I said, you may have to do it on your own for a year, and see how much time is spent. And we don't really know how much time Stephanie was spending, hers wasn't really a full-time position, so...
Some harm, they need another position to help her once Stephanie's gone.
So, and who knows when Stephanie's gonna leave, honestly. She's talked about September now, when we first had those discussions, it was June of this year, so...
Her contract is through September, so what, what she's extended to is maybe November, it's whenever she actually gets her grants done.
Did we sign a contract with her for another year?
No, her, her contract expires in September.
Okay, okay.
All right.
Okay, where else?
We got some done.
That's it?
That's it for the day.
We will schedule another time for the commissioners to go over the other funds and...
Again, we have the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth that are already scheduled, so if we don't have to have all those days, maybe we could do one of those days.
Uh, that'd be great, to have a simple one-day B O E.
That would be awesome. And I got, as I was telling, I got twenty-sixth is the regional land trail meeting with all four counties, so. And do the BLA one.
Chairman, you just wanna announce that we're adjourned.
Yeah, um, sorry about that, Doug. So that's the end of our Jennifer today, this meeting will be continued on later on, so we're gonna adjourn for now, and talk more about budget later in next week.